Unfortunately, I don't know if whether anyway. So thank you folks for your patience. We ran a little bit over in our in our workshop, but I think we got a lot of business behind us now, and I think that was a very constructive workshop. So thank you all who participated. A number of people have signed up to speak on Business One. Would it be okay if we well, the communications was very simple. Hold on a second. I think it was just from the infrastructure task force that they asked that the that any decision with regard to the Five Ash Water Treatment Plant be deferred until the I T F has had an opportunity to review the proposals and to ensure that they are consistent with our previous recommendations. So we can make that decision today when as we review these proposals this afternoon. So with that in mind, I'd like to move into Business One and Business One. Mr. City Manager, would you like to take it from here?
I can. I'll quickly introduce the item. We've got a presentation today that's going to be jointly presented between Ernst &amp; Young, who, as you know, we brought on board to do a financial analysis of the four unsolicited proposals that were received and then to do some sort of comparison of those proposals against each other. Up to this point, Mayor Commission, you've had these discussions and you've been able to have them in a private setting in a shade meeting where we've kept appropriate notes, et cetera. So much of what you're going to hear today and to the public's benefit, you're not going to hear a lot new today that you haven't already heard. The public would be hearing it.
This will be this is mostly for the public because we did undertake these meetings in the shade and because it's an honest proposal process, that was the appropriate way in which to begin that conversation. So today's exercise is to present it to the public so the public sees exactly what we've been told. And so now we'll hear the presentations from Ernst &amp; Young as to the four the four applicants who have made proposals.
It'll be a blended presentation with our Public Works Engineering technical staff. So with that, I'll turn it over to our friends from Ernst &amp; Young to make introductions and begin the presentation.
Thank you. Who's here? Oh, there you are. Is your microphone on?
We see these people for the first time in public. I literally feel like.
I didn't think you were real, but.
I am real. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you're much taller than on Zoom.
Yeah, that's unusual. I usually come out shorter. So it's nice to be here in in real life for once. So that's that's a real pleasure. What I wanted to do over the next thirty minutes or so, though, I'll be guided by you in terms of the level of detail we go into, is provide a brief verbal summary of the comparative evaluation report that we undertook, comparing and contrasting the relative merits of the four unsolicited proposals that were received in respect of the Five Ash Water Treatment Plant. And as as was alluded to by Chris, there is a body of work that sits behind this presentation. There were four individual evaluation reports which evaluated each proposal on a standalone basis against a series of evaluation criteria we had agreed with the city. And then there was a summary comparative evaluation report which lined up all the bids side by side and considered them against those same criteria, but at the same time. And then this presentation is an extract of that report with a with a narrative overlay from me. So what I would like to cover is a brief summary of the background and approach that we've adopted, a quick discussion of the preliminary considerations that went into the evaluation, then a more substantive conversation about the evaluation of the water treatment plant proposals themselves from a commercial value and risk transfer perspective, from a technical considerations perspective, which will be addressed by Omar from Public Works, and then the financial terms and the level of cost certainty attached to the proposals that have come forward. Now, as we'll talk about, three of the four proposals were focused solely on the Five Ash Water Treatment Plant. One of the proposals encompassed both the water treatment plant and also the taking over of the operations, maintenance and management of the water system in its entirety, including the distribution system. So for ease of comparison, we will also look at the incremental value and offer that comes from that that offer, but we'll deal with that as a separate bolt on after we've looked at the water treatment plant proposals to enable a more straightforward comparison. And then we'll talk briefly about what next steps might look like. So there's a lot of words on this page, but I'll I'll just I'll just briefly summarize. So between May and September 2021, the city received four unsolicited proposals, and we've set these out here: the Aqualia team, the F L W team, the I D E team, and the Next Spring team. Each one is effectively a consortium of multiple companies. The Aqualia team comprises FCC Aqualia, which is an experienced water operator, FCC Construction as the construction entity, and then Primoris and C E S as local engineering design consultants. The Fort Lauderdale Water team comprises Suez, again, an experienced operator, Ghani Construction as an experienced construction contractor for the plant, and then K K R as equity provider and funding arranger. The I D E team comprises I D E as operator, Kiwit as obviously a very substantial construction contractor, and then Ridgewood Capital as equity provider. The Next Spring team comprises Next Era Energy Capital, Next Spring Water Investments as the design and construction contractor, and then U S Water as the proposed operator of the plant, U S Water being a local water operator. So that is a brief summary of the four teams that submitted their unsolicited proposals. Now, Aqualia, I D E, and Next Spring are all focused, as I mentioned, on the water treatment plant alone. The Fort Lauderdale Water team also encompasses the operations management of the wider water system. So in terms of how this evaluation has been conducted, each proposal has been scored and evaluated on five criteria. So there were two preliminary considerations: capacity and experience and compliance of the proposal with the P three regulations. And then following that, each proposal was evaluated on three core criteria: commercial value and risk transfer, technical aspects, pricing, financial terms, and the level of price certainty attached to each. So what I'll do is go through each of those components briefly, and I'm happy to answer questions as we go. So again, significant number of words on this page. I didn't want to simplify or dilute the messaging that was in the core report, but again, I will provide a brief a brief summary of each. So what we're looking at here is a is a series of consortia with a mix of local and international expertise, experienced operators of varying scales and construction contractors, by and large, very substantial construction contractors. So I'll just take each one briefly in turn. The Aqualia team, Aqualia will be the equity provider and operator. Aqualia is a multi-billion dollar turnover business, substantially European-focused in its and Latin American-focused in its operations. FCC Construction is part of the FCC group, as is Aqualia, and again, is a very substantial U S construction contractor with with many billions of dollars of assets. FCC's construction is experienced with major civil works projects in the U S, though has less direct experience of of major water construction projects in the U S specifically. The F L W team, as I mentioned, comprises Suez and K K R, Suez as operator, K K R and Suez both as equity providers, and Construction will be provided by Ghani Construction. Again, all very substantial entities. I won't go into the details, but they're all very substantial and experienced operators. And Suez and K K R have experience of very similar concessions elsewhere in the country, notably the Bayonne Water Concession Project in New Jersey. The I D E team comprises I D E and Ridgewood as equity providers, Kiwit, as I mentioned, as a construction contractor, and I D E will be operator. So Kiwit is obviously a large U S-based construction company. Ridgewood is a well-capitalized equity investment firm with significant infrastructure holdings in water and in other sectors in the U S. An I D E is an Israeli-owned water operator and technology provider to the water sector with operations and capital projects experience in the U S. The Next Spring team is fundamentally backed by Next Era Capital and Next Era Energy. Next Era, obviously, a significant energy company based in this part of the world, very significant capital at its disposal. It has experience of water infrastructure development and operations, but primarily viewed through the lens of water treatment for energy infrastructure rather than municipal water infrastructure per se. And then it's relying on U S Water as a regional water operator to provide the operating capacity for the for the water treatment plant once it is built. I think it's worth noting that I D E and U S Water are, relative to the size of the project, relatively small operators, certainly compared to Aqualia and Suez. But in the in the context of I D E in particular, the capital structure and the guarantee structure put forward by the consortium reflects that that sort of relative scale of I D E and is is reflective of the balance of commercial risk transfer that can be achieved. That situation is somewhat less clear for for U S Water and the Next Era solution.
Can you sorry, can you say that again? Relative to the size? Yeah.
Sure. So the so the Five Ash Water Treatment Plant project is a pretty substantial project and will come with a series of fairly substantial operating costs and performance obligations. I D E and U S Water have, you know, are not small entities, but the value of the contract compared to their existing operations is much larger compared to, say, for example, Suez or Aqualia. So their relationship their relationship with this project will be will be much more important.
Right. Kind of outs it's significant size for their.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
And is that negative, positive, neutral in your view?
I think I don't I don't think it's a negative thing. I think it's neutral, providing the performance and guarantee structure and the capital structure that goes around that is reflective of the fact that lenders, you know, will will be concerned or will be mindful of the size of the balance sheet and operating capacity of those companies vis a vis the obligations they're taking on. So I think, you know, without kind of preempting some of the discussion, I think the I D E team is definitely reflected that in my mind in terms of the proposal that they've put forward, in terms of the conservative level of equity contribution. So they're putting in more equity. They're recognizing the parent company guarantees and performance guarantees that will be required. I'm not sure that Next Era have necessarily gone that extra step in thinking that through or have addressed that necessarily to the same degree in their proposal, which isn't to say that they couldn't, but in terms of the data we have in front of us, that hasn't been.
But that's a really important point, though, because are they biting off more than they can chew? You know, do they have capacity? You know, those are going to be important considerations. You know, we once had a contractor here to handle our refuse and our solid waste and our recycling and all of that. And they were competing bids. And one of the one of the people bidding, you know, was just going to ramp up if he got the if he got the deal, you know, whereas there was an existing company that already had capacity. So we would and we would ask that for your opinion going forward, you know, as to your expectations of these companies and the ability to be able to accommodate the kind of impact that this would have this water treatment plant would have on their existing operations. So that's important to us going forward.
Yeah, agreed. I just want to, you know, make make one point that I'm not saying that U S Water couldn't do this, or that financing couldn't be arranged off the back of this. I'm just saying that that kind of implicit commercial concern hasn't been fully addressed in the in the proposal that's been put forward. But notwithstanding that, the you know, the design development, construction of the project is backed by Next Era, which is, you know, an eighteen billion dollar turnover company. So it is, you know, it is a very significant entity in its own right. It's just that crossover between design and construction and then operating. It's just that crossover between design and construction and then operating performance where there is a, you know, there's a potential issue that would need to be, you know, where extra comfort would need to be sought.
Okay, thank you.
So just to briefly talk about experience, which I've touched on, Aqualia has, has very significant international experience in, in operating water and wastewater infrastructure and P three projects. However, most of that experience is outside of the United States. And equally, while FCC Construction, again, has significant experience with major construction projects in the U S, most of that is outside of the water sector, and their water sector experience, again, is, is mainly concentrated outside of the United States. So whilst the Aqualia team undoubtedly has the track record and experience to deliver this project, they can't demonstrate the same level of U S-based design development, construction, operation experience that perhaps some of the other teams can. The F L W team, as I mentioned, has experience of other similar concessions, notably the Bayonne Water System Project, where they are delivering something almost directly equivalent to what is being proposed here. And Ghani has, as a constructor, has, has experience of some, of major water treatment projects, both in the U S and elsewhere in the region. The I D E team, again, has experience both in the U S and globally, particularly in advanced water treatment plants and desalination projects, including the Carlsbad Desalination Project in, in California. And Ridgewood as equity provider is, is financing the Vista Ridge Project, which is the largest water P three in the country in, in Texas, in San Antonio. Kiwit, again, very significant construction contractor with demonstrable experience in water treatment, infrastructure development. As I touched on a second or two ago, Next Spring also has that experience. The operating experience comes from U S Water, but from a construction perspective, most of their experience is in developing water treatment plants of a similar technology to the one being proposed here for Five Ash, but in the context of water treatment for power generation. So water purification, advanced water treatment for power plant assets rather than municipal treatment, and consequently, that experience is, is somewhat on a smaller scale than the plant being, being considered here. So if we move on to point compliance with P three regulation, this is a relatively simple slide in that the, the requirements of the P three regulations are relatively straightforward, and from that perspective, each, each bidder has, has ticked the relevant boxes adequately. Now, we obviously are not legal advisors, so I wouldn't provide, resume to, to provide a legal opinion on anything, but from a, you know, a desktop review of the data that's come forward and the rules as we understand them, each, each bidder meets the requirements of the P three regulations. So then we get on to the first substantive point in terms of commercial value and risk transfer. And what we've, what we've done, and what you'll hopefully remember from our, from our previous conversations, is that we've been through each of the key risk categories that are typical in a water treatment infrastructure project, looked at the balance of risk allocation between the city or the rate payer, and we, we treat the two as interchangeable terms to some degree, and the private sector contractor. And then we try to draw some comparisons against the, the four teams in terms of the extent to which risks are transferred or retained in accordance with our understanding of good market practice. And I think, you know, for the most part, all of the bidders are proposing a balance of risk transfer allocation, which is consistent with good P three practice in the market and good water treatment infrastructure practice. There are a few areas, though, that I think are worth drawing out as, as potential distinguishing characteristics, and these are highlighted with, with asterisks. And I'll just pick on a, a couple of the major ones that are, that are worth taking account of. So I think that the, the first one that's kind of really worth, worth a brief, brief conversation is labor cost and performance. And I think the messaging from the, the city to the proposers has been that the staff involved in the project should remain with the city on existing terms and conditions, and that there's no expectation that staff will transfer or see any impact to their, their working terms and conditions. And all of the bidders have, have understood and accepted that. That comes with a number of, of consequences in that clearly the bidders then can't take the risk on terms and conditions or, or pay scales, because clearly that's not within their control. But for the most part, they are prepared to take responsibility for the performance of those staff under their management in the course of the project. Now, I, the I D E team is, has been a little bit more cautious about, about that, particularly in terms of taking risk on, on staff performance, but has acknowledged that that's an area for further negotiations, so they haven't closed the door to that. The, the Aqualia team and F L W team are perfectly comfortable taking performance risk associated with city staff under their management. But the I D, but the Next Spring team has suggested that it expects to take on those staff, or those staff will transfer to it after a five-year management period. So that isn't strictly in, in accordance with the city's expressed desires. So I think the two distinguishing ones here, I D E in terms of slightly less appetite for risk transfers for staff performance, and the Next Spring team reflecting an expectation of taking on staff after a five-year interim period. The other, another secondary that I think is worthy of, of a bit of time is just the approach to inflation risk and indexation. So in each case, the payment that the city will make to the contractor for the performance and management of the assets will, will increase over time. Now, in the case of I D E and Next Spring, that will be a fixed index, either one percent or one and a half percent respectively over, over time, whereas the Aqualia and F L W teams expect a increase at C P I. So in, in that sense, the Aqualia and F L W teams are transferring inflation risk to the, the city, whereas I D E and Next Spring are absorbing those inflation risks, where if C P I is higher or lower than expectation, they take the consequences of that. Now, the city takes inflation risk now on its operations, so it's arguable that the I D E and Next Spring team offers a, an enhancement compared to the current position, whereas the Aqualia and F L W team reflect a, a continuation of the status quo. One point I would make, though, is that the Aqualia team does assume that a hundred percent of the payment will be subject to C P I, whereas the F L W team assumes that the operating cost component is only subject to inflation. So what that means is that the Aqualia team is indexing that portion of the payment that is used for debt service. So effectively, the Aqualia team proposal means that the city takes more inflation risk than it is currently taking, because not only is it taking it on its operating costs, but it's also taking it on costs which are currently not subject to inflation risk, i.e. debt service connected to the system.
This seems to me like a significant point differentiator. Is that, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I think, I think it is. We'll, we'll see when the, when we get on to later analysis, is what, what the Aqualia team structure does is it enables it to offer a lower starting price, which then escalates more steeply over time, whereas where you take, for example, the I D E team, it has a higher starting price, but it escalates at a much slower rate over time. So in effect, what you're doing is kind of pushing back payment obligations later into the concession term under Aqualia. So there is, you know, in each case, you know, I think each bidder has taken a judgment about where, you know, value is likely to be best offered. There is an element of financial engineering that's open to all bidders to try and find the right balance, you know, clearly in the absence of dialogue, each bidder's made its best judgment about what, what's most important to the city. But yes, you know, as, as it currently stands, the Aqualia team offer exposes the city to a, to a lot more inflation risk, albeit at a lower starting price. And then a third point, and this is the one, final one I'll make on this slide, is that each project team assumes that there will be an interim agreement, which will carry the project through from the place where it is today to a fixed price contract, which will then be delivered over thirty or so years thereafter. But as it stands today, there is a significant level of difference between the bidders in terms of the extent to which costs, both construction costs and operating costs, are genuinely guaranteed. So each, each bidder has undertaken a certain level of design work, and we'll get on to this in, in more detail on a, on a subsequent slide. But what that means is that level of design work implies a level of margin of error or cost uncertainty attached to the numbers that are in their proposal. And clearly, the lower the level of design work that's been undertaken, the higher the margin of error, the higher the degree of cost uncertainty. So as at today's date, the Aqualia team, the F L W team, and the Next Spring team in particular, offer a potentially significant level of cost uncertainty, both in terms of the construction costs of the Five Ash plant, but also those lifecycle and maintenance costs that drive off those underlying construction costs, because they haven't done as much design work as would ultimately need it, be needed in order to crystallize those prices and hold them firm. Now, they're assuming that those, that detailed design work and cost certainty will come during the interim agreement period. So by the time you get to signing the, the concession properly, those costs will be fixed, but as at today's date, they're not. Now, the, the clear water, I think, is between the three bidders that I mentioned and the I D E team, because I D E have taken, undertaken a, I would say, a materially higher level of design development, and have stated that their, their cost envelope is barring a few sort of, you know, ground condition and intrusive investigation issues, which they couldn't possibly have resolved at this point, that subject to those matters, their price is effectively fixed, both from construction and operation period. So the, the I D E team offers a much higher level of cost certainty today compared to the other bidders, where those other bidders will have to rely on the interim agreement period in order to effectively go through that, the rest of that design process, in order to offer that equivalent level of cost certainty.
So, so what happens if one of the other companies come to us and say, hey, we need, we need to change our pricing because things are going up? And we say, well, contracts are contracts, you know, you agree to this. So what are the options? Do they go out of business? Because they're probably going to set up an entity just for this, so.
Yeah.
How much will it be capitalized? How much can they absorb in terms of losses? What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I, I think as, as the agreements are constituted, they are not taking any real risk until that design development period has happened. So, you know, somewhat bluntly, I think you, you know, they will go through that interim agreement, and they will come up with a final price as a result of doing all that design work, and that will be the price that they offer you.
And if we don't take it?
If you don't take it, then you are, you're effectively, you have an off-ramp. You can, you can, you can cease your relationship and either fall back to a reserve bidder or, or do something differently. Now, the challenge is that in a number of these cases, the, the interim agreement period is, you know, is between, I think, nine and fifteen months, depending on which bidder you're, you go forward with. So there could be quite a protracted period of time during which these costs are being firmed up, where you will, you will basically be just waiting for the developer to, to advance its design and finalize its costings. When you see that, if you don't like it, then you can, you can, you can exit. The terms of that interim agreement have yet to be agreed with any of the bidders, but you, you are, you are facing a, you know, a relatively long period of time without any real price certainty.
So if I understood you correctly, then we have a certain window within which we can make decisions of whether or not to move forward with them? I mean, I'm trying to see, are we on the hook for the entire time? Is there an exit ramp? You know, tell us, what is the exposure? Because I mean, obviously, whoever bids is going to bid low and think, oh, well, I'll get them later on, you know, with increased, you know, interim agreement. But what's our, what's our risk as a city in trying to, in, in, you know, intercept that kind of outcome from the get-go before we start making a decision?
Yeah, so, well, I, I mean, I think, I think the risk, so I would, I would say two things. One, the interim agreement terms have, have not been negotiated with any of the bidders, and, and so there is no documented, um, commercial heads of terms that govern this arrangement right now. What I would expect, based on, you know, experience elsewhere, is that the interim agreement will include a certain cost envelope, which would be agreed upfront, whereby if the city, if the bidder cannot bring the project within that cost envelope, then you have the right to exit that interim agreement and, and walk away. Probably, you know, and then the extent is to what, the, the big negotiation area is what you have to pay, if anything, in terms of breakage costs for all the design work that the bidder's put in, presumably in good faith, but ultimately couldn't get it within the financial envelope. If, if the need to replace the treatment plant is, you know, urgent and time-critical, then clearly that situation puts you in a, you know, a comparatively weaker negotiating position, because, you know, nine months or a year have passed from today, and therefore your, you know, your runway for, for sorting this problem is, is reduced, and, you know, the other bidders that were part of this process will have, presumably will have gone on and done other things, or, you know, may not necessarily be available to immediately step in as a replacement bidder, because they themselves would have to go through the same design development process. So unless you're contemplating running multiple bidders in parallel, which, you know, has its, has its risks as, as well as its advantages, then, you know, you are more likely to be in a, you know, weaker negotiating position at that point.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, Mayor, share your, share your thoughts on, on this. How, how much does this matter to you in your analysis?
It, it matters, it matters quite a bit, so maybe if we can move on to some of the others.
Sure.
We've tried to quantify what that might, might look like. You know, and I think, you know, part of the challenge with, with this is just the, the nature of the unsolicited offer, because each bidder has had to make a judgment call about how much time, money, and cost to spend in developing its proposal, completely at risk. So what that's resulted in is, you know, bidders making differential judgments about how much to invest in, in their proposals. And, you know, for, for whatever reason, the I D E team has invest, has invested to a point where it is able to achieve a higher level of design development and make a, you know, a stronger commitment in terms of, of price certainty. So, you know, the city did not set out any expectation as to what would be required, and therefore bidders have had to form their own judgments. So what I'll, what I'll do at this point, if this is okay, is I'll hand over to Public Works to talk about some of the engineering and technical components, and then I'll come back, give you a break from my voice, and then talk about some of the financial risks and consequences of this design uncertainty.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Omar.
Good afternoon. Omar Castillon, Assistant Public Work Director, Engineering. So the engineering team in Public Works that has experience with water treatment plants evaluated these four unsolicited proposals. And we picked some criteria to kind of compare and make charts where it shows where something meets the criteria, exceeds the criteria, or does not meet the criteria. A little history on the Five Ash Water Treatment Plant. The existing water treatment plant was built in nineteen fifty-four and supplies the bulk of the city's drinking water using a lime softening treatment process. The future water treatment plant will be built at the Prospect Wellfield Site. The preferred process of treatment is Scheme eleven, which is nanofiltration and ion exchange, as stated in the Carolla Report issued on December twenty nineteen. The existing Five Ash Water Plant will be demolished, and the site will be used for water storage and distribution purposes only. So we have considered this criteria here. We have seven different criterias. I'll go through each slide, show you all the different scenarios and comparisons between the four unsolicited proposals. the four unsolicited proposals. The first one is experience constructing water treatment plants of similar size in the U.S. Aqualia has no experience. They have built multiple large water treatment facilities, but not in the U.S. Suez has constructed multiple large water treatment facilities internationally, including some in the U.S. So they exceed this criteria. One of the plants here that is shown is the Harworth Water Treatment Plant for 200 million gallons a day. That is a surface water treatment plant. IDE exceed this criteria. They have constructed multiple large water treatment facilities internationally, including some in the U.S. And here's two examples, the Claude Lewis Desalination Water Treatment Plant for 50 million gallons a day, and the Wayne Hill Water Resource Center for 40 million gallons a day. Next Spring does not meet this criteria. They have not constructed water treatment plants of this magnitude in the past here in the U.S. The next criteria is experience operating water treatment plants in the U.S. Aqualia does not meet that criteria. They operate multiple water treatment plants, but not in the U.S. Suez exceeds that criteria. As shown again, this surface water treatment plant is being operated here in the U.S., and it's at 200 million gallons a day. IDE has operated plants in the U.S. and exceed the criteria. And we have three examples here, one for 25 million gallons a day, Claude Lewis Desalination Plan for 50 million gallons a day, and the Wayne Hill Water Resource Center for 40 million gallons a day. Next Spring also exceeds that criteria. They operated plants here in the U.S. One of them is the City of North Lauderdale. That's a 7.5 million gallons a day. And City of Lower Hill is 60 million gallons a day. The next criteria is management of city employees. This allows water treatment plant staff to remain as city employees. Aqualia does meet that criteria. Existing city staff would stay with the city and work on the new water treatment plan. Suez also meet the criteria. Existing city staff would stay with the city and work on the new wastewater treatment plan and the wider water system if other piping is included in the final operation of the plan. IDE also meets the criteria. Existing city staff would stay with the city, and the IDE team would take no risk on staff costs on their performance of their services. Next Spring does not meet that criteria. City staff might remain with the city or transfer, however, after five years, the Next Spring team assumes that all staff will transfer. The next criteria is achieves water treatment goals, and this is based on the Carolla Report that I mentioned earlier. Aqualia does meet this criteria. Is 80% nanofiltration and 20% raw water bypass. PH might be lower than the goal, and the color of, the prefer color of, which is below eight, might not be met, as they claim that it would be 15 or below. It still meet all the secondary requirements for water federally and in state, but it doesn't meet the criteria as the Carolla Report. Suez also meets the criteria. Is 100% nanofiltration system. PH might be lower than goal, and the hardness of the water might be lower than the goal. IDE...
Wait a minute, so hardness equates to color?
No, hardness is mineral content in the water.
Right, I understand that, but sometimes mineral content affects color.
It could, but at this point, they do meet the criteria of below five.
They do, okay, because it isn't indicated there.
Yeah, I mean, they meet it, but these other ones exceeded.
Okay.
So like IDE, for instance, they have a 70% nanofiltration and 30% ion exchange. They do exceed the criteria and meet all the goals as the Carolla Report. Next Spring also exceed that criteria. They have a similar system than IDE, 70% nanofiltration, 30% ion exchange. The next one is complies with consumptive use permit. This has to do with how much water we can use out of the Biscayne Aqua Fire. Aqualia does exceed this requirement. Treatment of the process is 90% efficient and 10% reject, which means that 6 million gallons a day will be sent to waste. Suez does meet that criteria. Their treatment is 85% efficient with 15 reject, which means that 9 million gallons a day will be sent to waste for every 50 million gallons a day that they produce. IDE exceed this criteria. They're 90% efficient and 10% reject. Again, 6 million gallons a day goes to waste. Next Spring also does meet this criteria. It's 90% efficient, 10% reject. Project completion, this has to do with the schedule and when the project will be finalized. Aqualia does meet the criteria. Their project will begin 2026. Water production will begin in 2026. Suez also meets the criteria. The plant will begin production 2026. IDE exceeds this criteria. New plant will begin 2025. And same thing for Next Spring. They do exceed this criteria. The next one is meets city resilience goals. Aqualia does meet that, they all do, and this has to do with the building finished floor elevations based on the southeast Florida climate compact sea level rise, withstand category five hurricane winds, redundancy in treatment processes, and emergency backup power and fuel storage in the event of a power outage. So the next slide is the summary of all these different seven criteria factors that we evaluated, so you can see the different scenarios.
That's great.
Okay. Any questions now?
Mayor, we good with that presentation?
Does that complete your presentation? Does that complete your presentation?
That completes it.
Okay. Does that complete the presentation for all the people that are going to make a presentation? Everyone has spoken now?
No, he has to continue.
Come back there, Mr. Young, to finish.
There is a financial presentation also that EY is going to...
Who's making that presentation? Back, okay.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Okay, I'll try and keep this reasonably crisp in the interest of time. So the third component of the evaluation was the financial terms and the certainty of those pricing. So what we've done is we've tried to provide a like-for-like comparison, as far as reasonably practical, between the four bidders. In the first instance, in terms of the water treatment plant alone, acknowledging that FLW is proposing a wider project beyond just the water treatment plant. So clearly, what we've worked with is data from the bidders. We've tried to normalize assumptions to provide a fair basis of comparison as far as possible. And then what we've tried to do is include the city's own estimates in the mix as well in order to try and provide a basis for comparison against numbers that the city itself is familiar with. So the first point to note is that, you know, we have had varying levels of detail and data from the bidders. Some have more underpinning data at their disposal than others, given the level of design development, and we've had to make a number of normalizing assumptions. So what this chart shows is the year one, assumed to be 2027 for the purposes of this analysis, payment obligation from the city to the developer for the provision of services arising from the new water treatment plant. So what this effectively means is that at one end of the spectrum, we have, let's pick the IDE one as the central one, is a $70 million dollar a year payment obligation from the city to the IDE team, who will design, finish design, construct, operate, maintain, and meet performance requirements associated with that plant. And then we can see the varying levels of cost for each of the individual bidders. Now, at this point, this does not take into account the fundamental level of cost uncertainty that I mentioned earlier, and we'll look at that on the next slide. Two points I would just mention, both in respect of the FLW team. Clearly, we've had to try and extract the costs of the water treatment plant from the wider FLW proposal, and so we've done that as well as we can. And equally, the FLW team included a $70 million construction contingency, so they themselves reflected a contingency for design uncertainty. But given that the other bidders haven't done that, we removed that in this analysis in order to provide a like-for-like basis of comparison. So what we can see is that there are really, you know, the FLW team and the IDE team and to a large degree, the other bidders, all propose capital costs within a, you know, a certain range. You know, certain bidders are at the lower end of that range, others are at the higher end. What's also interesting to note is that different bidders are assuming, you know, in some cases, quite significantly different operating costs for the plant. Some are rolling forward the city's own estimates, others are assuming a reduced level of operating cost compared to the city's estimates, and others are actually assuming a somewhat increased level of operating cost. So everyone is trying to form a view on what it is going to cost to run this plant. But as we can see in this case, the IDE team is the more expensive, but it's also the one with the higher level of certainty attached to it and the lowest level of indexation risk. So if we move to the next page, what we've done here is to adjust for the maximum CapEx margin of error. So each bidder has told us what their level of design estimate is in terms of engineering class of design and the percentage of design that they have undertaken. So that is data that's come from the developers themselves. We've also agreed with the developers what the maximum margin of error that would imply is. So to take, not to pick on anyone, but to take the Aqualia example, they've undertaken a Class III level of estimation, 20% design, estimated margin of error, a maximum of 20%. So those are metrics which are kind of set out in kind of the, you know, engineering rules of thumb. So what that gives us then is the baseline level of CapEx, which they themselves have put forwards, and then the CapEx with a maximum margin of error attached to it. So that's not to say that necessarily everyone will hit the maximum margin of error, but it is a basis by which we can at least estimate the consequences of differential level of design. Now, what's really, I think, important to acknowledge also is that the city's estimates, which are the ones that have been included in various engineering reports from Carolla and others, have the lowest level of design certainty attached to them. So the city's own estimates, as they currently stand, have a plus or minus error of 100%. So while the city's own estimates look comparatively low cost compared to the bidders that have come forwards, the city's own estimates are subject to the highest level of margin of error from an engineering perspective of any of the proposals on the table. So if we adjust the payment obligation, the annual payment obligation for this maximum CapEx margin of error, what we can see is that IDE stays where it was, because effectively that price is de facto guaranteed. But the Next Spring, Aqualia, and FLW proposals are all uplifted by a certain amount, and that brings, that narrows the field quite considerably. And the city's own estimate, assuming that that margin of error crystallizes, is now the most expensive option on the table. But this is just the 2027 year-one price, the first year of operations. So what we've also looked at is the trend over time. And as I mentioned earlier, each proposal has a differential level of inflation risk attached to it, in that Aqualia probably has the highest level of inflation risk attached to it, IDE has the lowest level of inflation risk attached to it. So this chart in the bottom left shows the estimated payment obligation of the city over time from the first year of operations over the life of the concession, assuming a CPI of 3%, which is the city's planning estimate. And then, so what we can see is, as I mentioned earlier, the Aqualia example starts low, because the starting price is low, but it's subject to that inflation risk on the entirety of the payment. It goes up much more steeply over time, and then the others have a varying range of profiles of inflation risk. So if we look at that on a net present value basis, so just trying to take the present value of all those future cash flows and looking at them on a consistent basis today and taking account of the margin of error as well, which is embedded in these numbers, what we can see then is that there's a significant compression in the net present cost to the city of these proposals, whereby Aqualia, the city's own estimates, and IDE are broadly equivalent.
How is it that Next Spring can be looking at the same variables and consistently coming at the low end of all of these? And, I mean, is it just the cost of labor that they anticipate that can be adjusted in five years? Or, I mean, look at the capital expenditures, the cost of operation during the first five years. What are we missing here? That they consistently come, not just a small amount, but a huge, you know, a huge share that's different?
Yeah, and I think it's pretty much a little bit of everything, right? Yeah, so lower construction costs, lower assumed operating costs. They're assuming a higher level of financial gearing in operations, which means more debt and less equity, so a lower cost of capital. So really, it's a combination of all of those things coming to bear. Now, you know, how deliverable those costs are obviously remains subject to the interim agreement diligence and design period, right? So at this point in time, we can't really offer any comfort on those numbers, but I think, yeah, I mean, that's...
Why are you suggesting they're not, are you suggesting they're not real? They're just to lure us in at the low...
I'm not suggesting, no, I'm not suggesting that, but what I am saying, and I think this is something that Next Spring will agree with, is that they have, you know, they are at a 15% level of design development compared to, say, 30% for IDE, 20% for Aqualia. They're consistent with FLW. They have taken a more aggressive financing solution and a more aggressive position on operating costs. Now, you know, US Water is an experienced regional water operator, and Next Era is an extremely experienced project developer, maybe not necessarily in water treatment plants of this scale, but in major power infrastructure, very experienced. So, you know, I don't think I can, I can't, I'm certainly not suggesting any kind of gaming or, you know, anything other than a straightforward approach from Next Spring. I'm absolutely not suggesting anything other than that, but they have just made more aggressive assumptions on a range of topics, which isn't supported by a tremendous amount of detail.
My sense, I could be wrong, is just, given the size of the broader organizations of Next Spring, the financing options, it just seems to me they have some tools that maybe the others don't have, or resources others might not have. Is that one possibility?
It's possible. I think the key on the financing is that Next Spring are assuming that they're going to basically development finance the entire construction project, which is unusual in P3, but not that unusual in major power development projects. which is which is unusual in project in P three, but not in, you know, not that unusual in in major power development projects. So that, so they're bringing some, they're clearly bringing some of that power development experience and mindset to bear. The 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 assumption of refinancing at eighty-five fifteen in operations, I think, is a much higher level of operational gearing than the other bidders are proposing by and large. And, you know, we don't necessarily have a, you know, a basis to say that that's not achievable. But I I do know that, given the relative scale of US Water in this mix, there is a, you know, there is a question that needs to be robustly answered about, you know, can that be achieved? Now, if Next Era effectively are balance sheet financing construction and can't refinance it on the terms that they've proposed, then you know, to some extent, that's their risk. But, you know, there isn't, there hasn't been an indication that that is a risk that they will seek to pass to the city. So, you know, they may have to take the risk that they can't find refinance post-construction on the terms that they've proposed.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions, Commissioner? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
So let me just turn just very quickly to rate impact, because clearly a lot of this 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 comes down to rate. And what what we've tried to do then is translate the impact of these water treatment plan proposals into the into, or using the the city's rate consultants, try and put these numbers back into the rate model and see what the rate impact would be. And we've looked at three cases here. One, the city's base case rate, which is which is what's been approved. The city's a rate impact if that hundred percent margin of error comes to pass. And then the IDE rate increase, because that's the one that really has the most kind of assertive kind of impact on rates. And the Aqualia, Next Spring, FLW ones will be all in in the range below the the IDE one, but above the the city's base rate. But what what this kind of shows is that on headline terms, the the IDE proposal, and it will will require a more significant and more rapid rate increase than the city is currently estimating. However, the city, the city's estimate is based on delivering its its two percent design without any increasing costs. If the city advances its own proposal and that hundred percent margin of error comes to pass, then city rate increases will be more significant than currently estimated and will, in all likelihood, go beyond the rate increases that are projected by IDE. Now, there is a timing issue here. Because IDE have taken, you know, relatively conservative approach to financial gearing and inflation, what that has tended to do is push forward the rate increases. Also, they're proposing to deliver the project considerably faster than the city's own estimate. So that means the plant comes into operation faster and therefore those rate increases bite bite sooner. So what the IDE proposal kind of implies is a rate increase which will happen more sharply than the city is currently expecting, but it will then plateau sooner. Whereas the rate increases the city is estimating for its own solution will likely, if that margin of error comes to pass, increase into the into the longer term. Now, there is there is an engineer, you know, a financial engineering aspect to this, right? Because the 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 plant is one component of the water system, which is one component of of the the city's function. So it isn't, you know, inevitable that the rate increase has to be shaped this way. I think clearly the payment obligations to IDE have have been structured in a way that IDE feels is is efficient and defensible. But there is scope to negotiate a different impact in terms of shape of of payment obligation. And equally, the city does have discretion as to how the consequences of this Five Ash project are translated into the rate base over time. So there is a, you know, it is not difficult to imagine a number of ways in which the impact could be smoothed. So, but nevertheless, as currently forecast, the rate increases will come slightly faster under the IDE proposal than under the city's current estimates. Fi- final bit, which I'm I'm sure you'll be pleased to to hear about, is the is the is the differential considerations connected to the FLW proposal. So the Suez, KKR, Ghaney proposal, which involves the the takeover of the operations and maintenance of the entire water system, not just the water treatment plant. So so far, we've only considered the water treatment plant component of the FLW proposal. But there are a number of issues, options and and value opportunities connected to that wider proposal. So just in in a few minutes, I wanted to touch on those. So the FLW team will assume not only the the rehab, the the rebuild and development of the water treatment plant, but it will also assumes the rehabilitation operation and maintenance of the entire water system, including the other treatment plants, the 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 trunk lines, the distribution system. And what that means then is it reduces the interface between a P three project and the rest of the city's municipal water system. And it assumes a, it it creates the opportunity for higher levels of investment in the rest of the water system as well. So what this kind of equates to then is the opportunity to transfer operating and performance risk for water quality, not just at the output of the treatment plant, but across the entire drinking water system to to the end users' taps or faucets. So wh- what this does is it creates an integrated operating environment and capital and maintenance environment, which covers not just the treatment plant, but also the the pipework and all the buried infrastructure required to get that water to to end users. The FLW team are also proposing that they would take on the the billing and collection function, so they would form a direct interface with with end users. And then they they would, through this more integrated system, then have the opportunity to bring a range of innovations and efficiencies to the management of the water system as a whole, which would not necessarily be afforded to the treatment plant operator alone. So predictive maintenance and and Internet of Things-based management monitoring and management of the wider water system. So there are a number of of challenges associated with that. So one, the 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 proposal right now, and again, this is an unsolicited proposal, so it's not unreasonable for FLW not to have considered every conceivable facet of this of the of this project. But there is a reasonable degree of intercan- interface between the water system and the sewer system in Fort Lauderdale, particularly the financial flows of funds between the water system and the sewer system. And that would need to be unpicked in this project in order to create a standalone water operating profit and loss account of balance sheet that that could operate independently of the sewer system. The city would retain rate-setting authority. But nevertheless, the the FLW team will require a certain amount of revenue in order to manage this 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 wider system. And if the city cannot meet the requirements of the the FLW revenue requirement through rate increases, it will have to meet that revenue obligation by other means. So while the city does retain its rate-setting authority and autonomy, it doesn't have as much operational latitude as it did because it still has to meet the payment obligations and requirements of the FLW team, regardless of whether it chooses to pass that through in rates or not. And then finally, there's been an assumption made by the FLW team that around two hundred and thirty-five million dollars of debt, municipal tax-exempt debt, will need to be diffused in the water system in order to move this into 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 private operations for for the length of the concession. But that will need to be diligent with the city's bond council, and advice will be needed on on whether that is the right amount of debt that will have to be diffused, or indeed, you know, whether it will need to be a different amount.
That's interesting.
So if people have got the the appetite for just one more slide, I appreciate I'm probably testing people's patience a little bit here. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the rate impact.
One question before you go to that. So can you flip back to the previous slides? So can that money, the two hundred and thirty-five million, be used to subsidize the rate payer's cost of water?
Well, I think I think the the scale of the 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 payment has been sized such that the FLW team has assumed, has has understood and assumed that a certain amount of debt connected to the water system will be, will need to be diffused as a result of this transfer. So this is a payment basically from FLW to the city to enable that debt defeesance to happen. But that that two hundred and thirty-five million is going to have to be recovered from from rates. Now, how that that repayment of debt is manifest in terms of the the impact on the city is not something we've looked at. But clearly, the city will not have two hundred and thirty-five million dollars of debt, if this number is correct, that it'll have to service. So that will free up debt service capacity or operating but or budget for other purposes.
Okay.
So going back to to the rate increase, what we've tried to do, and again, this is, you know, to some extent, building assumption on assumption, but we've tried to take the the entirety of the FLW team proposal and then run that back through the city's rate model to understand what consequences there would be to ratepayers as a result of this proposal. Now, at a at a headline rate, the the FLW rate increase is higher than that assumed by by the city. But there are a number of of important things going on here. So firstly, if you take into account the the, again, the 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 margin of error, that pushes the rate increase for the city's base case above that assumed by FLW Water. Because they have a, they have done more design development than the city has, they have a lower margin of error, and therefore, there's there's less uncertainty in rate impact from the FLW case than the city's case. But what's also really important to understand is that the FLW team has made, you know, a working assumption about how much rehabilitation investment is required in the management of the distribution system beyond the water treatment plant. And they're assuming almost twice as much per annum in terms of rehabilitation requirement than the city is assuming in its rate case. So the city's assuming approximately twenty million a year, needs to go into the distribution system to progressively maintain and improve it. The FLW team is assuming approximately forty million a year. So while the rate increase superficially from the FLW team looks higher, there is an awful lot more money going into the system as a result of of their proposal. Now, that, I think, you know, that is a working assumption that FLW have made based on experience of running and operating systems of equivalent age in other parts of the country. But it's a number that is, to some extent, a negotiable number. Because, you know, to some extent, it's it's up to the city and FLW to reach an agreement on what the appropriate level of investment is to safeguard quality, to manage rate impact, and to transfer appropriate performance risk. So, you know, there is acknowledgement on on the part of FLW, as I understand it, that, you know, that number is a is a is a working assumption which will need to be agreed with the city going forward. So if if the margin of error on construction is normalized, and if the rehabilitation investment is normalized, then we are looking at a at a rate increase under the FLW proposal, which is above the city's base case, but below the city's margin of error case. And I think I will pause there. The, you know, the decision points, I think you, you know, probably don't need rehearsing in terms of ranking outcomes and deciding what to do next. Clearly, the next step would be the negotiation of an interim agreement with 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 a, you know, the the top-ranked bidder if if the city decides to move forwards. So thank you for your patience.
Thank you. One one question for you. Rate structure. So FLW, I think we saw IDE previously. I'm just trying to get a a totality of rate structure for all four. Do we do we have that somewhere?
Yeah, we we've we, to be to be completely clear, we didn't run the Aqualia and Next Spring proposals through the rate model because we looked at, we looked at the the IDE cases, the kind of the the more, you know, the one that had the greatest rate impact earliest.
Okay.
And we compared that against the city's case. But the Aqualia and Next Spring proposals are anticipated to be much closer to the base case.
Okay, so if we were gonna try to juxtapose all four on this graph, we'd have Aqualia and Next Spring would mirror the the black line.
Yeah, then IDE would be at the at the the top end, and FLW would be, you know, in between, you know, above the other two, but below IDE.
The yellow. Okay, so and the, is the incremental trajectory of Next Spring, FLW, and Aqualia, does it remain proportionally the same to IDE as the city does in this?
Yeah, we we haven't, we haven't run that analysis. But but based on the 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 revenue requirement curves with the differential indexation, I would expect the shape of those curves to be more aligned to the city rate increase with the margin of error.
Yep.
With a higher, so I think the the rate impact will be, will start off lower, but will will continue to climb, you know, progressively over time as that indexation.
And do you think that differentiation will continue, or will ultimately all four converge?
I think they, I think they will, they will tend to converge, but they will probably tend to converge, you know, in the in the in the twenty thirties.
Twenty thirties.
Because at that point, you, you know, you, each system has kind of reached a, it's a kind of level of equilibrium. And then there's enough revenue flowing through the system to meet meet the obligations of the of the the payment obligations of the project.
Okay, so in other words, just to put in simple terms, Aqualia, FLW, Next Spring, probably lower rates and lower rate struck, uh, increases than IDE over the next ten to fifteen years, and then kind of similar in terms of increase and 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 level of rate.
Yeah, I think we're we're kind of, you know, that that latter point is more of an educated guess, the model only extends out ten years. But yes, I think that, I think that's a fair assumption.
And the reason for IDE's significant higher is increase in in overall rate?
Yeah, there's a, there's a number of things. One, the project's being delivered faster. So, you know, with the P three, you pay only when the asset's operational, so you're paying for water. But then, because they're delivering the asset faster, then that payment obligation hits sooner. Secondly, they have assumed the lowest level of inflation risk, so that one percent indexation. So what that means is that you, you know, you have a smoother, you know, of a flatter curve, but it needs to start at a higher level in order to create the required amount of revenue for this project to work. So that's another component. And then they have also assumed, you know, a a more, you know, a relatively conservative level of financial gearing. So there's 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 more equity and less debt in the capital structure, so it's a more expensive capital structure, which also tends to to push up the the early days price because the the debt is being repaid on a on a kind of a straight, a straight line type basis.
And remind me, who has the, like, COE or COI or inflation caps? It's
Yeah, so Aqualia
And basically, that's my question. And then my next question would be, does that apply also to rates? In in other words?
Yeah. So Aqualia and FLW have payment obligations on the city which are linked to CPI. Aqualia, a hundred percent of the payment obligation is linked to CPI, including the debt service component. FLW, only the operating cost component is linked to CPI, so those costs which are actually indexing. IDE, a hundred percent of the payment is subject to one percent indexation uplift, so it's not connected to CPI, but it's just going up by one percent. And Next Spring is the same as IDE, but at one and a half percent.
Okay, so Aqualia and FLW, am I, is it right to say Aqualia and FLW, due to the linkages to CPI, could have higher, could have increasing rate structures that aren't going to be as limited by progression or increase as IDE and Next Spring?
Correct, yeah. So you are, you know, in in the, in IDE and Next Spring, you are, you are getting an inflation hedge.
Yeah.
Now, in terms of the impact on rates, you know, with it with the, so if we park FLW for a second in respect to the others, it is to some extent at the city's discretion how it passes the cost of this project through into rates. Because obviously, this is only one part of a much larger system which the public doesn't have direct connection to. It's it's all behind the scenes. But if you were to try, you know, if you were intending to, you know, pass through the costs of this in as straightforward and transparent as way as possible into the rate structure, then yes, absolutely.
Okay. And that would be the case.
Would be a corollary. Now, in, in the case of FLW, because they're assuming that they're taking over the whole operation of the water system and undertaking billing and collection, their assumption is that whatever rate, you know, that the revenue will flow from ratepayers directly to them, not via the city. So you'll still be required to set rates at a, at whatever level you, you so desire. But you, you're gonna have to always be cognizant of generating enough revenue from the water system in order to pay FLW's bills.
Right. And you may have said this already, and I might have missed it, the, is the rehabilitation investment that FLW proposes similar to that of the others, or is there a marked difference?
The others make no assumption at all, because that rehabilitation is only in respect of the distribution system, outside of the boundary of the water treatment plant. So the, the other bidders have made no assumptions at all about that, because it's, you know, it's outside of the scope of their project. So the only benchmark we have for comparison is the city's own estimates of what it's, it's budgeted for in its rate study, which is half of what FLW is budgeted for.
And is that because, sorry if I'm missing, is that because FLW is proposing a broader project?
So they, so ye, yeah, so FLW are proposing a much broader project than the other three bidders.
Right.
So that's why the others haven't considered it. In terms of why the FLW number is a lot higher than the city's number, you know, that, that is, to some extent, a, an estimate made by FLW based on its experience of operating and rehabilitating systems elsewhere in the country. So it is, it is, you know, it, you know, it has assumed that the system needs a lot more money spending on it than the city has assumed.
Right. Great. And Chris, question for you on, on that, which is, the FLW proposal, correction if I'm wrong, Chris, but it's, it's this more comprehensive than involves more of the total system, the others more just the singular facility, is, remind, I just forget what we had talked about, what our city team had suggested, is, so number one, I think the others were open, or at least I vaguely remember one or two of the others being open to considering the broader holistic system, is the city's wish and staff's wish to focus just on the facility or the broader system?
Well, that's, that's a philosophy on how we run our water distribution system going forward. So, you know, I can, I'm gonna answer that with a bit of an explanation and say, obviously, we have this Five Ash water treatment plant, and we also have the Peel-Dixie treatment plant. They are not too closed systems, they do blend together in the distribution system. So at some point, if we've got us running one of the water plants, and we've got somebody else running one of the other water plants, the products from those two water plants are gonna blend and provide drinking water at certain locations in the city. I can't predict the future and predict, but, but I can predict that there will be something that goes wrong. That just seems to be the way things work from time to time. And, you know, when it does, I wanna make sure that we have strong enough, if we truly are just in a, somebody else operate Five Ash, and we operate Peel-Dixie, they all blend together and provide a product, that we're not pointing fingers at each other, saying, it was your plant, no, it was your plant, no, it was your pipes, no, it was your pipes. And so I think, you know, that, that could be difficult to do. I think, to your point, I don't know that, you know, once we have that discussion and, and dialogue, if it's thought that it's more appropriate to be system-wide, I don't know if, if just the one proposer's interested in a system-wide agreement, or whether others would be as well. So that's the, one of the hardest things that Ernst &amp; Young had to do, is to figure out how to, apples to apples.
Yep. Alan? Go ahead, Alan.
To the extent that other proposers have not proposed a system-wide, they wouldn't be able to change that now.
Wouldn't be, okay. So we gotta go with...
I've been privy now to the concepts and the plans from the one proposer that encompasses the whole system, can't go back and say, well, give us another crack at it, and we'll do a whole system.
Fair enough. Okay. That's helpful, Mayor, I just want, I think that's helpful to just kinda understand.
Yeah, sure.
So, thank you. I think that's all I've got, Mayor.
All right. We have a couple people sign up to speak, and...
Mayor, can I ask real quick about this 5,000 gallons, the rate? Did you, when you ran these numbers, we have a tiered rate structure, did you take that into account when you were doing the water rate that the city of Fort Lauderdale, or did you just kinda take the average of the 5,000? So our rates go up when you use, like, over 5,000. So I'm wondering, are we redoing our rate structure in general, Chris, or are we, can we keep the tiered rate structure?
Yeah, so we, we just, we just looked at the impact on the standard water rates, we assumed that it all flowed through that, as a simplifying...
So you're looking at the average with the 5,000? Is that something we would have to come up with, Chris, as a commission, the, the rate structure?
Yeah, my guess is we would bring back our rate setters and go through the whole modeling example again, and, and put some different assumptions in there as to when different revenues were needed.
Right.
And then let it build a, a water rate from there that's sufficient to be able to cover those expenses.
Okay. So maybe looking at water rates today that the consumer will pay, it might not be 100% accurate or 100% able to project, kind of, at this point, until we really run that rate structure?
Well, and yes, to the earlier point, that these are a lot of assumptions built on assumptions, and that would be yet another one that, as to what the rate might be, it's gonna require a lot of data in to get reasonable data out.
Yeah. I, I, yeah, I think, I just, yeah, I think we're not trying to, you know, the purposes of, of this analysis is not to accurately predict the rate impact to the end user, but to try and draw clear water, forgive the pun, between the bidders on a way that, you know, kind of makes sense to the, to the, to the audience. So, you know, there's clearly a, a ton of nuance in a rate-setting exercise. This is just intended to try to stratify the differential cost to the city of different proposals.
So we may not understand today the exact rate the user will pay, but we do understand the, the difference based on the modeling and what the user would pay based on the different projections from each company, so...
Correct, yeah.
But that's kind of what we're looking at, not necessarily where we will actually end. And then also, I, I know you talked about FLW, they did incorporate some of the debt service that we already have into, is that what you were explaining?
Yeah, that, that's right. So the, the assumption by FLW is that by taking over the operation of the water system and effectively becoming private use, that that will require the defeesence of debt, tax-exempt debt that is currently connected to the system. So they've made a financial allowance for repaying that debt, which would otherwise become taxable as a result of private, private involvement in the project.
So what we're looking on, at, on this page, this does not take into consideration our debt when we're looking at price per gallon, stuff like this, the debt, that the, the bonds that we've already taken?
Correct. This is, you know, the, the adjustment that I talked about is, is at the margin. It doesn't, it's not a, a total bottom-up analysis of all of your, your debt.
Okay. And so, Chris, even our numbers, the city's best case, worst case, does not include the debt service that we've already taken out?
No, it anticipates future debt.
The black and the gray?
If they're using the, the base rate that's approved today, we did contemplate that future debt in that rate, but that debt has not issued at this point.
Okay. Just, so the, the yellow line, the IDE, they would assume, I, I guess, when we are taking out a bond in terms of our water treatment facility, we have not considered at all a water treatment plant. We're only considering our water mains and pumps and things like that, right? So that all kinda needs to be, we're, this graph only looks at Five Ash.
So I think, yeah, I'll, and I'll defer, obviously, to who put the report together, but I, I think where the, where the difference might be here is in this whole uncertainty and margin of error percentage, that, you know, we've, we've inserted future debt into our rate modeling that has...
We have already, right.
...the current rate, correct? But, you know, we, we have, we have not normalized it for this possible 180 to 100% of margin of error that is in the report that we're carrying at this point as to what it would cost us to do it ourselves.
Right. With, okay, which has our debt in it when we're doing it ourselves. So this 100% margin of error, that's a pretty big, that's a pretty big...
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of like meteorology. I guess you don't have to be right, and it can still rain or not rain, but...
Right. Is that, do we have any idea as a city of where we could come in? I mean, probably not. I, I mean...
We'd have to go to future, further design. Our design's just not at a, correct?
That's what you were saying, was...
We're the least designed of anybody who's...
We're the least. So IDE is, has the most design to date.
Yeah.
And that's why their certainty is a little bit more predictable. Ours is the least, that's why we have the 100% margin of error. And FLW is the only one that's kind of taken into consideration some of the debt that we have borrowed for the whole water treatment, you know, operation.
Yeah, correct. Because, because they're taking over existing operations and existing assets which have debt connected to them. For the Five, for the replacement for the Five Ash, it's a greenfield asset, it's, it's all new debt, so there's nothing that would need to be diffused.
Okay. And so my one last question, which I think is important, so since everybody has already submitted, if we as a city say that our preferred water treatment plant should be the nanofiltration plus the ion exchange, can, can somebody go back and change, or they have to only, you know, follow through with what they presented?
No, at that point, you'd be sort of converting, you're making a request, it's almost like a, a criteria that you're putting out there, so that would be an unfair, an unfair method for the city to employ, because you're, you're now giving an opportunity for somebody else to take somebody else's project. So, no, we, you could, the option, if there's something, if, if all four do not satisfy what you need as a city, you can reject all four.
Right.
And you can put out there exactly what you want.
Okay. I, I mean, I think for me, and we can talk about our thoughts later, but I think for me, I guess the nanofiltration and the ion exchange, it seems like that's the best path, but we can talk about that later. Okay. All right, go ahead.
Okay. So we have four people sign up to speak. Brian Donaldson, followed by Mark Janey. But Mark, you're just part of one of the teams, correct? Or are you? Oh, there you are. Did you wanna speak, or did you just wanna answer questions?
I'm happy to address the...
Okay, that's fine.
...you like, but I'm certainly here for questions.
That's fine. So we have Brian Donaldson, Mark, you can follow him, and Dennis Almer. Is Dennis still in the room? There you are. Okay. Brian, you got three minutes? Right, but you haven't been called yet. I'm just calling the first three. Okay, go ahead, Brian.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you for your time today. This is the first time that the public has had an opportunity to see these four unsolicited proposals. So I just wanna caution that we don't move too quickly on trying to make a decision as to which of the four. My concern is, is that we, as a city, have been running our own treatment plant for the past 68 years at Five Ash, and I wanna make sure that we're thinking about the ROI that has been coming into the city. We had been putting it into general fund, which was not the direction that we currently have moved back to, of leaving the ROI in the water and sewer fund, or, or in the water fund. But if we're giving that profit margin to an outside company, then do we have full control in the future over our rate structure, and are we giving up that profit that we as citizens could be making on our water program? So my concern is, is that, looking at it, that maybe from some of these proposals, there were great ideas in each of those, but maybe as a commission, you might wanna look at, if none of these meet all of our criteria, that we reject all four, and then put out the idea, as the vice mayor had mentioned, about what kind of filtration we want, what are the profit margins that we're looking, et cetera. And we bond it, and we build it, and we run it, because our team of city employees have been doing a great job with a, a plant that we all know needs to be replaced. So the answer is, we can't do nothing, but my concern is, without having looked at any of these proposals in depth, what the impact could be negative to the taxpayers in their future budgets if the rate structure is not met to the criteria that they're asking for in their profit? Are we then gonna be having to fund that through general fund, whereas currently, we have been making sure that the water system is operating and being funded on its own? So that's just my concerns.
All right. So Mr. Herbst, at some point, can you provide that information to us? What is the, what has been the profit that we've been getting on our, our existing water tru, water treatment operations, and, and what impact will that have on our general budget, should we decide to choose one of these four options? It's a, it's a point well taken, and at some point, we can get that answer for you.
Yes, Mayor, we can look into that.
Thank you. Brian, followed by Mark, or Dennis? Dennis, why don't you come up? And then, if, Mr. Janey, if you wanna speak at the end, you're welcome to. Dennis Almer, followed by Boyd Corbin.
Earlier, the Department of Homeland Security and the FBI warned that the Russian government was specifically targeting the water sector and other critical infrastructure as part of a multi-stage intrusion campaign, Carper said. The Cyberspace Solirium Commission, an unpartisan group established in 2019 to develop a strategic approach to defending the United States against cyber threats, identified the nation's water and wastewater utilities as compromising one of the components of the nation's critical infrastructure system, most vulnerable to cyber attacks, along with the electric grid and the financial system. Adam Bexler, global head of third-party cyber risk management for cybersecurity company Blue Voyant, said water utilities will need to continuously work to upgrade their equipment, software, and technology processes, and to increase the skill levels of IT workers in order to respond to the ever-evolving nature of cyber attacks. IT network protection is a constant game of cat and mouse. There is no good clean state where you can rest. We cannot rely just on technology. We need to have the right processes in place to stay in front of the threat. That's why I believe that city employees should be in charge of our water treatment and no one else. I also wanna comment about rates. As you know, inflation is, is out of sight, and our water, our, our electric bills are gonna go up more in the next four years. What's gonna happen is people aren't gonna be able to afford to water their lawns, we're gonna have a degradation in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Boyd Corbin, followed by Peter Partington.
Okay, if you look at the 2021 REES pilot study, you can see that we do have another option. We can use ozone and carbon, and the city can rebuild Five Ash, spending $170 million. And then they can use the rest to replace water pipes that are turning the water yellow. A P3 company, one of these companies that you do business with, would focus primarily on profits and definitely not on water quality. The 2021 REES pilot study report says the 23-acre site is plenty of room where all the, where Five Ash can be rebuilt, and it's where all the water distribution pipes are located. It would be a waste of money to build a four-mile transmission line from the new water treatment plant location at the Prospect Water Fields, when it could be built right at the existing Five Ash water treatment plant. I have a question. Is the, are those four-mile transmission lines included in these bids, or not? That'd be about $50 or $100 million. The Prospect Water Fields is not a good location, since it's next to the executive airport, which is directly in the fi, in the flight path. You're talking about city resilience from hurricanes, what about from plane crashes? The Corolla engineer, Lyle Muntz, who wrote the Corolla report, is currently being investigated by the Florida Board of Professional Engineers concerning what he wrote in the Corolla report. Excuse me, guys. He said ozone would not work, and carbon would cost between $130 million to $158 million per year. He was wrong. The Corolla report is what everything is based on, all these four bids, and it is completely wrong. REES Engineering says carbon would cost around $6 million a year. Plus, you're not going to be wasting six to nine million gallons of water per day when you use the proposed filtering techniques. Carbon not only removes dirt and color, but it also removes many other unregulated toxic chemicals, such as PFAS. According to the EPA, activated carbon is the only filtering material that removes all 12 identified herbicides and 14 pesticides, along with all 32 identified organic contaminants and components of gasoline solvents and industrial cleaners. cleaners. Our water comes from the Biscayne Aquifer, which flows from the north, where they're spraying so many pesticides into the water that it's killing off all the manatees. The Corolla recommended water filtration method, nano filtration, does not remove all this junk. Let's bring in Rees Engineering and see what they say about these four unsolicited bids.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Can I get an answer on the, on the transmission?
You're allowed, you're allowed to speak. This is not a question-and-answer kind of exchange. As you know, you've asked that many times. We thank you for your.
Right, but can you tell these people to, to get an answer on this?
And you can ask them on your own, but this, this is.
I can ask them on my own.
Allowed to speak. So, thank you. Mr. Partington. Good afternoon, Peter.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Peter Partington, city resident, vice chair of the Infrastructure.
Former city engineer.
Correct, in the dim and distant past. Dim, dim particularly. I would just like to remind you that the Infrastructure Task Force would have liked the opportunity to weigh in on these proposals. There already seems to be a fair amount of water that's passed under the bridge.
They sent a communication to us, which we read earlier today.
Okay, so you are aware of that?
Yeah, we are aware.
Okay. My second point is similar to the first speaker. Just to remind you that the water supply is a natural monopoly. And monopolies are known to generate, or have the possibility of generating outsized profits, particularly by cutting costs and sometimes, therefore, quality. So I'm urging you to be very careful with how you regulate the entities that are going to be replacing the water plant. In fact, to the point, I would like to suggest that you ask Ernst &amp; Young to take a look at whether there are alternate ways that they could propose to control the rate and everything regarding the regulation of monopoly water utility. That is my suggestion to the commission at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Janey, did you want to add to any of this?
I just, just very briefly, Mayor, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. It's a, it's a real pleasure to be here in person and to see.
Is it really?
It's been, it's been a long time coming that we're finally gotten to this point. And certainly, our team, ID, Ridgewood, and Keywood, are, many of which are, are here today, are, are very excited to, to be here. Certainly ready to address any questions you might have. Maybe just wanted to highlight a few, a few elements again that we've been working and, and meeting with you all to really understand your keygaps and objectives on replacing Five Ash, ensuring that it's clean, clear water, that, that's utilizing, you know, the best available technology. The gentleman mentioned cybersecurity. You know, we're very, very sensitive to both the physical and cybersecurity of, of this plant and all of your assets. We're excited to be working closely with the city and your staff on operating. In fact, we've met many times with, with the Teamsters. Andy Mattis is here today, and we have their support in moving forward, and we're very excited about that. So with that, again, we, we really thank you for your time and your consideration on this. Happy to address any questions you have.
All right. Well, just so that you know, I mean, I feel like I just walked into a car dealership and saw four very shiny, beautiful vehicles. And then I walked around and kicked the tire, and then I saw the sticker on the window, and, you know, my jaw dropped. I mean, these are significant increases that are being proposed for our, our use of our water. So, you know, that's something we have to wrestle with as going forward. I think, I mean, that's, that's really important to us. We do not want to hit our community with such significant increases and with open-ended possibilities of more increases, you know, over the 30-year period. So just keep that in mind as we go forward.
I, I appreciate Stephen, when he was making his remarks from the ENY presentation about the financial engineering. We certainly welcome the opportunity to sit down and, and talk further about structuring the pricing to maybe alleviate some of the higher upfront. But again, you know, we, we're happy to have those discussions and look at those options. We remain very flexible on that, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, Mr. Lagerblum, where do we take it from here?
So from here, I guess.
Should I defer to the Infrastructure Task Force to let?
That would be completely up to you all. We could.
Folks, do you think we should defer?
Have them review it. I know some of you have said you were, because again, this is information you all have heard long before today, you've been brought along the way, that, that you were ready to tell the city attorney and I to prepare an item for tonight so that you could rank. If you're in that place, then if you want to tell us that, that's fine, too. Or whatever other direction you might have for us before we move on to the water quality update.
Okay, so I have my thoughts. Vice Mayor, what are your thoughts?
I would like the input from the Infrastructure Task Force. I don't, I don't know where I am at this point with a P3 versus RFP.
Right, I get that. I get.
So I, I, I think there is value in getting a little bit more input from the Infrastructure Task Force. But when they look at it, I'd also like them to consider the RFP model so they can just kind of bring back their thoughts to us. I mean, when I look at all this, I, I kind of have an idea in my mind who I, who I'd pick.
Right.
If we went with one of the four, based on the city's analysis and Ernst &amp; Young. But I, I still think there's value in hearing from the Infrastructure Task Force.
So you would, so you'd like to get some feedback from the ITF then?
I would, but I'd, in addition to the four of these proposals, I would like to get input on an, an RFP as well.
Okay, all right, good. Commissioner McKenzie.
No comment. I'm just waiting.
Yeah, but I mean, would you, do you have any thoughts about whether we should defer to allow the Infrastructure Task Force to weigh in on this?
I don't see, here's my deal.
What's that?
I don't see where, there's no disrespect to the Infrastructure Task Force. I don't see where they can do any more than what we have done and will do. A recommendation from them? Fine. But we need to fix, to keep shifting through the, through the soil here and just trying to figure out what we want to do.
Oh, I think ultimately.
How we want to move forward. But the infrastructure board would not be able to give me anything that I haven't already been presented, in my opinion. And no disrespect to them, they've done a great job. I commend them and all that they do. But this is a tall order for us. You can smile all you want, but we're going to make a decision. I said it before, you know, we're going to impact our employees here. Water rates is going to go up, which I've always fought water rates, but I've been willing to sit in the room to see where we are and see if we're going to go down this road of selecting one of the unsolicited, or a P3. But again, at the end of the day, the bottom line is going to matter to me and how I, how I vote. So I, I don't want to say kick it for them. If we're going to kick it, kick it for us.
Well, I don't think we're kicking it.
Yeah, but you're saying, do I want to defer? But you're saying, do I want to defer for the infrastructure board? No, I don't.
You don't want to defer?
No, not for the infrastructure board, because we've been dealing with this.
Okay. Commissioner Glasson, what are your thoughts?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I was wondering what that timeline would be. I, I certainly have no problem at all for the Infrastructure Task Force to look at it, but I don't want this to go on forever and ever.
Do we know when the next meeting is?
I do not. I could figure it out unless Alan Dodd knows right off the top of his head when the next meeting is.
Marilyn? First Monday of the month, so.
February 7th, Commissioner Glassman's birthday. What a gift. What a gift.
It's a holy day.
On some households.
Should be no work anywhere in the city on that.
Well, I already got President's Day off, so I.
For this, too.
I'll celebrate that. Thank you.
Let's move it tonight, then.
So it'd be February 8th is when you guys meet? I mean, February 7th, excuse me. Yeah. And our meeting right after that is February 15th.
So that's correct.
Would we be able to get a report, then?
Well, they're going to have, they've, they're going to have the ability to review everything, all the materials that we've been given in advance of their meeting. So now that it's all public, and then they could, they can have their meeting and then get back to us. We can have a representative from that task force come to the city commission and make their recommendation, and we can certainly make a decision on that.
Great. I'd be good for that for February 15th. That'd be great.
What do you think, Commissioner Horson?
Yeah, Marilyn, do you think that's enough time to analyze? Okay. Yep, I'm good with that. So have a, come back with a recommendation on February 15th for us to move on.
Okay.
Considering.
All right, there's a consensus, or majority, I should say, to ask the Infrastructure Task Force to review these four proposals, and in addition, to come back with an opinion as to whether or not the RFP process should be preferred instead of the P3 approach that we, we've reviewed today in response to the vice mayor's request. Your first meeting is February 8th, and the city commission can bring it up on.
7th.
I'm sorry, February 7th, and then the city commission can review it again on February 15th.
That sounds good. I think in the spirit of fairness with everybody that showed up to this meeting, it would be appropriate for us to just publicly say there's nothing additional going to happen then on this topic today at the evening meeting. So there's no reason for everybody to stick around.
Correct. Nothing, we'll defer that. Yeah, so that nothing will happen tonight. Okay. First of all, let me thank you all, all the folks that came from the different applicants in response to the unsolicited proposals that, that came before the, the city. Tremendous amount of work, we, we understand, has gone into all these. We're taking this very seriously. This is a really important project for the, for this community. And, and I can't tell you how, how thankful we are for what you've been able to propose to the city. We have a tall order to fill here, and we're very, very happy that the, the community has stepped up. And I want to thank the citizens on the ITF who have agreed to, to help us in making this decision. And, and let's move forward on February 15th. Okay, thank you so much, everybody. We move on to business, too. Water, water. More water. Water quality update. We have a few people who've signed up to speak, but I think there's a presentation that's going to be made. Is it going to be made by city staff?
That's correct. We'll ask Dr. Gasman to lead.
Dr. Gasman, hello again.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Dr. Nancy Gasman, Assistant Public Works Director and Chair of Sustainability. Today, we're going to be providing you an update on the city's efforts to address the commission top priority of waterway quality. And the presentation really is a comprehensive look at all the work that we've done. In addition, Rachel Silverstein from Miami Water Keepers here, and they've brought a couple of extra slides for, for you to look at, to provide a little more information on their monitoring efforts. So with that, as you're, as you're well aware, the commission named waterway quality as one of their top priorities in the year 2020. In 2019, they had, they had also named Algo Blooms as a, as a major top priority for them, for you, at that time. In 2020, we accomplished a number of really critical things related to water quality. The first was that we initiated this recreational water quality monitoring with Miami Water Keepers. We also adopted a restriction on fertilizing during the rainy season. We prevented 1,000 tons of debris from entering our waterway through our proactive efforts with catch basin cleaning and with the work that we do with street sweeping. And finally, we installed 57 pollution control devices in various areas of the city, which would help also continue to reduce those, from debris and sediments from entering our waterway. During this calendar year, we've completed work related to the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, or NPDES. This is related to non-point source pollution. And non-point source pollution is all of the small amounts of debris that come from a variety of area, areas, as opposed to source pollution, which is a single entity dumping something into the waterway or through, for example, the, the storm drain system. So non-pollution discharges are a really critical part of how our waterways are impacted in terms of water quality. As you know, we've performed weekly water quality monitoring at those 10 sites that were chosen. We've piloted protein skimmer technology, initiated remediation of water bodies that were impacted during the 2019 and 2020 wastewater discharges, including remediation of George English Park, which has been completed. We're also initiating installation of aerators at four different sites throughout the city. And we've initiated an Algo Bloom prevention pilot project as well. One of the things I want to highlight is that our stormwater system and the role of watershed acid management in addressing waterway quality, as you can see, we have five key goals as part of that watershed acid management plan. The second one is improve water quality and water, and our, and our natural resources. And when you look at the graphic on the right, what you'll notice is that there's an environmental aspect to four of the five goals that are part of that watershed acid management system. And that's because stormwater is one of the major ways that our waterways are impacted. And the work that we do there is not just about the quantity of water and stormwater that we manage, but also the quality of the water that reaches our waterways. To highlight this, when you look at our fiscal 2021 operations impacts and some of our performance metrics, you'll see that we performed over 15,000 proactive inspections of our catch basins, which helps generate work orders to repair those catch basins. But as importantly, it generates catch basin cleaning work orders. And because of those catch basin cleaning work orders, we've been able to clean an additional 5,400 catch basins. And along with our street sweeping efforts, we've removed almost 1,500 tons of debris in 2021. And as I mentioned earlier, that's about a 50% increase from just the year earlier. And we've also continued our cleaning efforts with two large pollution control devices that we have in the North Fork Basin. Another effort that the city has taken on is canal cleaning. And this is something that we've historically done for a number of years. But the graphic in the lower left will demonstrate to you that from the year 15, I'm sorry, fiscal year 18 through fiscal year 21, we've increased our efforts to reduce floating, floating debris in our waterway by, by 10, 10 times what we, we picked up in FY18. So we're now, over the course of the last year, we've picked up 116 tons, 116 tons of waste out of our waterways.
What, what programs did you initiate that allowed us to retrieve that kind of debris from our waterways? Were these volunteer efforts? Is these?
No, this, this, between the year, between fiscal 19 and fiscal 20, the city outsourced this particular effort. We used to do this all internally.
Uh huh.
And through the efforts of our vendor, they're able to focus exclusively on this activity. And because of that, they have developed a tech, developed a program that has resulted in a substantial increase in removal of that floating debris.
And is, is that picture up in the corner there, an example of what you've been retrieving out of the waterways?
That's correct.
What'd you do with the chair? I like the chair.
Next time we find one, we'll, we'll mark it for you.
Just keep me in mind. Thank you.
Yes.
Birthday present.
Thank you. There you go.
So in addition to the efforts to clean our system and to pick up floating debris, we've also increased our efforts to perform education and awareness. Part of our NPDES permit is that we are required to do some of that outreach. And we have done that with pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizers, and also working with various types of industries to talk about illicit discharges into our storm drain system or improper disposal of household hazardous waste, for example. We've been working very closely on Algo Bloom education, as well as monitoring efforts. And we had to do quite a bit of outreach when we changed our fertilizer ordinance, working with vendors of fertilizers and with the public to let them know what the requirements were. To implement that Florida-friendly fertilizer, that ban that goes from July 1st through September 30th, the core of our rainy season, we worked with retailers in the city to post information for their customers, as well as making more information available to, through the, the city's outreach efforts, to make sure that people understood that they're not supposed to be fertilizing during those summer months. One of the things that we worked through over the course of this year is Parks and Rec staff working in the marine industries have been researching options for providing mobile pump-out services. When you look at the center picture there, you'll see that there are a number of boats that are moored at Lake Sylvia. And this is an area that we know that mooring, mooring of some of those boats extend over long periods of time, which means that they need to pump out their systems. And we've been looking at how we can. And we've been looking at how we can copy those efforts in other areas where they have mobile pump-out services that are supported by the city, which reduces the costs and encourages those boats to use a pump-out system rather than quietly pumping out in the middle of the night. As you're aware, in 2019, the Commission also had a Commission priority that was related to algal blooms. And since that time, city staff have conducted monthly wet season monitoring inspections at 15 sites so that we can be well aware when we get the start of an algal bloom at those locations. And then we work very closely with the state to report anything that we see. As part of that effort, we hired a consultant to make some recommendations about how we can do mitigation of algal blooms when that, that may occur and also to propose a pilot project to help reduce the potential for algal blooms in some of our canals. And so this year, we'll be starting a pilot project in the Citrus Isles using a bubble curtain to see if that can help reduce potential algal development in that canal. We've already talked about our Miami Waterkeeper monitoring. In addition to that, the Broward County has two sites that they monitor at the city as part of our NPDES program. We've got our Miami Waterkeeper program as well and then the city also does proactive environmental water quality monitoring at a number of different locations, including the Middle River, George English, and in Tarpon, Tarpon River. So what are some of the results of that Waterkeeper program? When we started this program, our original intent was to provide transparent, near-real-time bacteriological data to the public using a publicly available application on their phone called Swim Guide. The 10 sites that were chosen were, were targeted specifically because they're areas where recreational activities happen in our waterways. And with this monitoring, one of our hopes was be able to focus in on areas specifically of, of water quality concern so that we could look at a variety of mitigation efforts. So if you look at a year of Miami Waterkeeper data boiled down to a single graphic, this is it. This is the Swim Guide information using the EPA Swimming, Swimming Standard. This is normally applied only to beaches, but we've applied it here across the city. And what you'll notice is that when you look at it from the, essentially the inland waterways out to the intercoastal waterways, there's a, a group of sites that continuously have fairly high ratings for passing this particular standard. And those four sites are the same sites where the city has designated water sport activity areas. So these are areas where they jet ski and water, water ski and, and spend time in the water and swimming in the inland waterways. And so these are the sites that we would have hoped would have the highest passing rate and that is what this one year worth of data has demonstrated, that the areas, the city wants people to use as water sport areas, those are the cities, the areas that have the lowest impact in terms of water quality concerns. Now, the, the waterways throughout the city are required to meet the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Class Three Water Quality Standards, which is a slightly higher standard than the EPA standard. And what this demonstrates is that we have a, a set of sites, three sites, that are not consistently meeting that threshold for standards. And those three sites are Sweeting Park, Himarshi Canal, and Tarpon River. So what is the city doing in order to address those concerns at those locations? The completed activities and initiatives in the Sweeting Park area include the fact that we've reviewed all of the discharge, discharge points in order to try to determine if there are any obvious sources in that basin. We've submitted a grant application to accelerate the DOR's Stormwater Master Planning improvements, which as mentioned, if you can improve your stormwater quality, you can improve your waterway quality. And then we've also smoke-tested the A2 wastewater basin to look to see if there are any clear examples of sewer leaks throughout that basin. What we have planned for this year is to clean all of the city-owned drainage pipes. I mentioned earlier that we regularly clean the catch basins, but we don't necessarily clean all of the connecting pipes. And so for this particular basin, we're going to be cleaning all the city-owned drainage pipes to try to remove any sediments and other concerns from those pipes. We're going to be improving the stormwater system in Northwest 21st Avenue, which is currently allowing sediments to come into that waterway. We're also going to be initiating the construction of the DOR's Stormwater Master Plan improvements, including the addition of some large water quality structures. We're going to be installing additional pollution control baffles, PRBs, and we're also going to be assessing opportunities for proactive soil improvements. And what many people don't realize is that soils do not only provide a drainage benefit, but they also provide a significant water quality benefit by capturing that sediment and preventing it from getting into the stormwater drainage system to begin with. In the Tarpon River Basin, the completed initiatives include the fact that we have cleaned the state and the county drainage pipes, which are very, are much larger pipes than the city pipes with outfalls that go into the Tarpon River Basin. We've installed new infrastructure in Rio Vista, which includes those water quality benefits that come with new infrastructure. We've initiated water quality monitoring in the western portion of the Tarpon River Basin. And we've also submitted a request for state funding for dredging the entire Tarpon River to improve flow. The work that we plan to do in the following year is to clean the city-owned drainage pipes. We're going to be performing remediation dredging in the eastern Tarpon River where we had the unfortunate wastewater discharges and we're also installing permanent aeration into the river area. And finally, for the Himarshi Canal, the completed initiatives include piloting the protein skimmer technology. We've completed the environmental assessment and permitting for the remediation dredging that will occur in that basin and over the course of the next year, again, cleaning all of the city-owned stormwater system, performing the remediation dredging. We're currently waiting on permits for that work before we can go out to bid and then installing permanent aeration in the Himarshi Canal as well. There was a lot of attention paid to the protein skimmer pilot project. The outcome of that project, after testing the technology in the canal for a three-week period, I'm sorry, three sites for a 12-week period at a cost of just over $35,000. The operations resulted in some waterway quality improvements in the immediate area around and near the barge, but not over the entire spatial extent of the Himarshi Canal. It really only provided temporary water quality improvements as that basin is both tidally influenced and receives stormwater from the surrounding area. Those waterway quality improvements weren't demonstrated to meet the water quality standards that we've discussed as part of the plan that was put forward by, by the company. And it also was determined that the technology worked much better at the more saline end of the waterway, which means that it's not as effective in areas that receive large stormwater influxes. So that concludes my presentation. I'd like to call Dr. Silverstein up and have her cover just a few more slides for you to talk a little bit about Miami Waterkeeper data that they've collected.
Thank you so much, Dr. Gasman, and with me is Elizabeth Kelly. She's also Dr. Kelly and she is leading this program on behalf of Miami Waterkeepers. She is our research manager. So very quickly here, thank you. Can you hear me? Excellent. Pleasure to be here with you all today and really happy to be working with the city on these water quality issues and sharing the information with the community and as Nancy shared, much of our data indicates that some of these waterways that we're routinely testing on a weekly basis have very good water quality and thankfully, those are the places where you have most of the recreation going on, but we know that there are three locations, specifically Himarshi, Sweeting, and Tarpon, that routinely have high bacteria levels and people are recreating in those areas as well. So that's, you know, I think very rightly where the city staff has been focusing attention on trying to figure out the sources of the bacteria that's getting into those waterways and trying to figure out ways to reduce bacteria levels in those areas. We also wanted to point out that we're also monitoring for chlorophyll levels. Chlorophyll is a proxy for algae in the water and what you can see here is that both in the wet season and the dry season, Sweeting seems to have very high chlorophyll levels indicating, you know, there's a lot of vegetative matter in the waterways there. It's a very slow-moving waterway and so that matches with our observations of being in the area as well. And then dissolved oxygen, so dissolve, how much oxygen is in the water is a really key indicator for water quality health and ecosystem health. Really, we would love to have ongoing data on dissolved oxygen levels that's also taken at night because what you really want to see is how low the oxygen levels dip at night when there's no photosynthesis going on, there's no sunlight, so the plants are not creating oxygen. But this is something we're going to be looking at in more detail and I should mention as well, this is all really preliminary data. Our one year of water quality monitoring was up January 12th. So we have not fully analyzed the one year of water quality monitoring data yet and we are going to do that and be submitting a full report to the city. And we're going to be looking at things like dissolved oxygen and chlorophyll levels and rainfall and temperature and salinity, combining all those factors together to have a more...
So what's the floor here? What's the, what, what, on your graph here, what's the optimum level that, not the optimum, the minimum level that you're seeking when you test this for dissolved oxygen?
So here, I, I don't think we can say yet what this is showing because what we really need to do is to look at it holistically with the temperature, the salinity, the bacteria levels, rainfall, and we'll be doing that in our one-year report that's going to be coming in a few weeks. We'd love to come back and present a full picture to the Commission and let you guys know what all these things look like together. I just wanted to show a picture of what the variation is like and specifically the bacteria levels, which is what we're sharing on a weekly...
Right, I understand that, but I'm just saying, in terms of oxygen, what is the, what is the standard that, that is the minimum acceptable level of oxygen and dissolved oxygen in the water?
I think that when you have an environment that is healthy, you tend to have higher levels of oxygen. So generally, when we go out and we sample areas that are, are healthy environments, we'll get, using the YSI as you see here in the picture, we'll get something like in the 90% range or the 80% range. Lower bacteria, lower DO levels generally tend to indicate that there's an issue there. It tends to be that there's a lot of bacteria or algae that's using all the oxygen in the area. So you can see a problem when you get the lower levels of DO. And the reason I wanted to include this in the presentation is because, again, you see Sweeting is low, has low DO, has high chlorophyll A, has high bacteria counts. So there's something going on in that environment that I think would be something that you'd want to look at a little more closely. I mean, Himarshi Canal is also low. You'll notice it doesn't seem to change. This is another part of our analysis that we'll be using in our report, is the difference between wet season and dry season. Generally, you do see a big difference, but in this case, it's pretty consistent as to which sites are low and which sites are high. So it almost doesn't matter how much rain we're getting, whatever is being introduced into the environment causing low DO and causing high chlorophyll and high bacteria, it seems to be there persistently.
Yeah, and I think, just to clarify, thank you, Elizabeth, that's, that's great. I think just to clarify the, the wet season, dry season difference and why we sort of separated those out, is that in the wet season, of course, you have a lot more rainfall, so you have more stormwater. You also have higher water tables, you're potentially getting, you know, more groundwater contamination getting in as well. So that's something that we're interested in looking at and you can see, I don't know if it's obvious in these graphs, but we'll, we'll be breaking that out so that you can see if there's things coming into the water with the stormwater or groundwater or whether or not, it's pretty consistent year-round and that will give us clues as to potentially where the bacteria is coming from.
Okay, thank you.
And with the dissolved oxygen as well, you know, as Elizabeth said, when there's more bacteria and more algae in the water, you tend to get lower dissolved oxygen levels and if you get very low dissolved oxygen levels, you can get fish kills. And that's what was happening in Biscayne Bay in the summer of, of 2020. We had that severe fish kill down in Biscayne Bay. The water gets hot, it also holds less oxygen, so you're more, more vulnerable over the summer. So that's, that's one of the reasons why we look at that. So as I mentioned, our, our full one-year report is pending. We're still looking into how all of these parameters that we've been monitoring on behalf of the city have interrelate and of course, we have been sharing this information as soon as we get it. We share it with, with the city and we share it with the public as well through multiple channels and people can look at Swim Guide to get the latest water quality information before you go in the water. And this is something that we also put the Department of Health's data onto the website, onto the app, so people can access that. At the same time, they're looking more at the beaches, we're looking more at the inland waterways. So we wanted to complement what they were doing by expanding the number of sites that were monitored.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Mayor, could I ask a...
Yeah, go right ahead.
Nancy, yeah, let me get Nancy up here first and then, thanks, Dr. Gasman. This is great and I, I really appreciate this partnership with Miami Waterkeepers as well as the work you're doing, your team, Nancy. What's the length of contract we have with Miami Waterkeepers?
So our initial contract was for one year with the option for renewals and the Commission funded an additional year that will go through January of next year.
Okay, great. Is, as, as I heard, you know, talking a lot about Sweeting and Himarshi as two of the more kind of challenging water bodies, Nancy, is it, and maybe this is already part of what you're doing in partnership with the Waterkeepers, but figuring out, okay, what's going on in those bodies? How can we, what's our plan to improve?
So one of the reasons that I mentioned the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit, the NPDES permit, is that in the, in the lack, if there's a lack of a defined source, it makes it very, very difficult to figure out exactly what's going on. And so the various activities and initiatives that I mentioned earlier in those three concerning water basins are examples of the kinds of things that we can do to try to identify or at least reduce some of the impacts that are happening. We have quite a bit of work that is going to be coming, especially into the Sweeting, Sweeting Park area, the North Fork. Two of our major stormwater improvement projects are in our waters, our, I'm sorry, our neighborhoods which feed into the North Fork, the New River. And so that will be one part of, of some of the initiatives that we'll be taking on.
Okay.
But providing permanent aeration, for example, in the Tarpon River should be helpful in, in reducing some of those impacts that we're seeing.
Providing permanent aeration?
Yep.
Okay, how?
We'll be installing aerators in the Tarpon River Basin and in the Himarshi Basin over the course of the next six to eight months.
Great, love it. How many, I'm sorry if I missed that, but how many aerators are we talking about?
One aerator per four different basins that we're currently looking at. The Tarpon is one of them, Himarshi is the other one, and then we're also looking to put permanent aeration at Cliff Lake and at Lake Melva.
Great, was that, is that in the deck?
The, the listing of those four, no, it is not.
Okay, could you give us a, just a little memo or, I don't know, something, a map of where those, because that'd be great to be able to share. Thank you. Rachel, just a couple of, thank you, Nancy. So just thinking big picture, you interact with a lot of cities, municipalities, you guys are experts on, on water quality and so forth. If you, you know, dream big, dream big, what else should we be doing as a city to improve water quality?
Yeah, that's a great question and, and I do applaud all of your leadership in having this kind of testing, you know, available and, and funding it. We've also worked with the City of Miami, Village Aquibiscayne for similar testing in their areas. And I think it's providing really valuable information. We can see what these sort of hotspot areas are for bacteria and then you can focus your resources on those areas. One of the first sort of low-hanging fruit steps I think you could take would be providing signage at the site where, where you're having these three areas where you're continually exceeding recreational water quality standards. And I think that would really help the public know, and that's something we actually did with the City of Miami, they put up signs with a QR code and if you scan the QR code, you go right to the Swim Guide app and it'll show you what the water quality is right then and there, in real time, before you get in the water. So that's, that's been a good resource that we would recommend.
And have they, did they do that where there were just heavy-used areas or water bodies or all?
So similarly to the, to the sampling structure that we worked with the city and the community on developing where we were going to be sampling, we really want to focus on areas where there's a high recreational value and people are using the water in those areas. And so we, that's what we did with the City of Miami and at all of the sites that we had with them, we put up those signs.
And, and in addition to just kind of increased awareness, what are the other benefits of that?
Well, people know, you know, how clean the water is before they go swimming is kind of the goal. And we're specifically looking at making sure the public has that information before they're, they're recreating and swimming and using the water. That's, that was really the benefit of having those signs there in case people don't know to look before they go.
Sure.
I think the city's taking a lot of proactive... I think the city's taking a lot of proactive measures, trying to track down the sources of, you know, some of the pollution, trying to figure out, you know, looking down the pipes, seeing, you know, where things are coming from, if there's illegal hookups or, you know, things like that, you know, cleaning the streets, cleaning the stormwater system is really valuable. In terms of monitoring, we, we would recommend potentially, and again, you know, the report's not complete, but it's sort of a next step that we could look at would be doing something called molecular source tracking, which is where you actually type out the kinds of bacteria that are present. So right now, we're just kind of looking at how much of this fecal indicator entericocci is present, and this next step actually looks at the genetics of the bacteria and can tell you, is it bird, dog?
Yeah.
Human, or, you know, just bacteria that lives in the environment. Because sometimes, you know, you'll have a spill, the bacteria will be present, and it'll kind of linger in the environment even though the actual waste is gone. That bacteria has clung on to a seawall, and it'll colonize that area, and you'll, you'll have that bacteria sort of endemic in, in a particular ecosystem. So that testing will, will sort of get at that question of what kind of bacteria is present. So that's another thing, it's, it is more expensive because you have to do, you know, individual genetic analysis on each of the samples, and you have to kind of do it over a long period of time, we found. We've tried to do it one or two times, and you just don't get enough information, so it has to be part of a whole sampling protocol. We're actually doing it with EPA funding we got for looking in some of the canal areas in Miami as well, so we're, we're doing that for a year. Elizabeth's also running that study, and we're doing nutrients, bacteria, and then source-tracking the nutrients and source-tracking the bacteria as well, with scientists from University of Miami, FIU, and a private lab, and it should be very interesting to see the outcome at the end of the...
Okay, great. So in summary, three additional things. We could be doing signage at the sites, continue to track down sources of pollution, and then molecular sourcing.
Yeah, do you have anything else, Elizabeth?
Tracking.
It seems that a lot of what you're doing already with environmental assessment is very, very good. I think there is a, a document that I believe I'd sent to Todd and to Larry that shows what you do in this, it's sort of a three-step process, where first, you do a lot of what's been done here, a lot of what Nancy has mentioned, where you track down possible sources, you look through all the sewer lines, you see if there's a septic issue possibly, you look at stormwater. But you also do an environmental assessment to say, what kind of soil do we have? What is the natural flow through here like? What should the depths be? And a lot, a lot of this has been done. We also have really good field notes that we take when we go out. So we say, there was an oily sheen on the surface, we're not sure what it is, it looks environmental, possibly organic. To investigate those little things to know the individual characteristics of each site, and then you can add your data that you used when you looked for sewer lakes or those things, and combine that with the environment itself, and then you have a much better idea of what to look for. You would already say, let's see if you see a lot of birds, you could say, I'm definitely going to target birds when I do my molecular source tracking.
Yep.
So definitely environmental assessment.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Can I just follow up on what you, what you asked, and maybe Dr. Gaspman can assist? So we, take, for instance, the Himeri Canal, we'll continue to monitor it, we're talking about doing more protein skimming and things like that, but isn't really the issue with the outfall that's going into that canal that continues to frustrate our ability to try to clean that canal? What's, what's, what are you doing with regard to that?
To, to respond a little bit to what Rachel had said, the city has already designed the signage for some of these other locations to help people get to the Swim Guide, so that's already in the works. In terms of molecular tracking, the county has done that in the past in our location, and the, the results are very confounding.
They're confounding, I know.
They're very confounding, yes. So, you know, if you determine that it's all birds, that doesn't change the fact that there's birds that are contributing bacteria.
And birds from the Himeri Canal, okay.
But to answer your question about Himeri, there's, there's multiple outfalls in the Himeri Basin, and so the starting point is to understand whether there's potential inappropriate discharges happening in that basin. So we're going to start by cleaning out all of the pipes, but for example, the, the commercial properties that are along La Solis Boulevard, the stormwater system in that area leads to the Himeri Canal. And there are certainly opportunities in that area to improve our enforcement of illegal, preventing illegal dumping into those canals because it's, it's a, it's a regular issue that we're well aware of. Washwater from the restaurants is often dumped down the storm system.
What is, what is dumped down?
Washwater.
Really? You take it over to the canal and dump it in the canal? Wow.
So those are, those are concerns.
Don't they have sewage pipes? I don't understand, don't they?
People do what people do, sir.
I mean, don't they just throw it down the sink and it's captured in our water treatment system?
Which is the appropriate way to dispose of wastewater, but there's, there's also, they'll, they'll take the kitchen mats out, and this also happens in the, in the, the Himeri Entertainment District over here on Second, where they'll take out the, the kitchen mats and they'll wash them off in the alley, which is also an inappropriate thing to do. So these are, these are issues that are constant, and we've, we're working with Sarah to try to address these concerns over time. We, we do put out educational materials to those locations and, and call upon the owners to help us try to address these concerns, so.
Okay.
I see them, I watched this up before, when I was doing my, when I was doing the leaf floors, and when you go around town, you observe, you'll see early in the morning and late in the evening, people washing grills out in storm drains, you'll see them washing mats out, not in appropriate places, because they have what you call a mop area that has a specific drain system at every restaurant, which is by code. But that worker who's outside, it's more convenient to go over to the storm drain, to the canal, to the lawn, anywhere but where it has been designed to be, and that's the issue. When we started looking at some of the things that Dr. Gaspman has discovered along, along the way about this, this added pollution, it's human, I'm not going to say air, it's human bad behavior, but I've seen it, I see it in the morning when I'm walking. I mean, I can walk up and down Flagel Village, I can walk up and down Sis Trunk, and I'll see three violations between six and eight o'clock in the morning of people, mats, grills, and other things that came out of a restaurant or out of one of these mixed-use projects where the guys cleaned out the garage. When he's washing it down, when it comes down to that last slope, it's more convenient to stay with our curb, to rinse those leaves or whatever he's rinsing to that, to that storm drain. So we got to go out and educate people, A, on what it does, B, that you shouldn't do it. And enforcement is very difficult because we have enough things to enforce, but I think education is, is, is the key to just letting the owners know that their employees are not doing what our code is designed for them to go and clean out, dispose of these type of chemicals and, or other activities.
Yeah, and the challenges are unique in each basin. There, there are some common threads, but each basin is unique in, in the potential inputs, and again, it's not, a lot of it is non-point source pollution. There's not a smoking gun that you can point to.
And Nancy, a lot of the, so storm drains on La Solis in front of some businesses, that, does that go to, where does that go? Does that go to?
Goes to Himeri.
That goes to Himeri and then tidal outflow. This is news to me, I don't, Commissioner, I'm glad you...
I wouldn't say, like, on La Solis, I would say it's probably more misbehavior in the alleys.
It's, it's in the alleys on the...
The alley's right behind La Solis, on the north side.
Alley's not, not corridor, yeah.
Or, or south side.
That's where that employee's going to be able to go and duck, hide from anybody else in it.
Yeah.
You're not saying anything bad, it's just that people do things when people aren't watching.
Dr. Gaspman, I have a question. Why, I'm going to go back to the protein skimmer pilot project.
Yeah.
So why only is, are you saying that it's better only at the saline end of the waterway?
So protein skimmer technology, what, what this company did was they took protein skimmer technology, which is used in the saltwater aquarium trade in order to polish the water quality in the aquarium. And so they're generally used in closed-loop systems. And an example would be the Georgia Aquarium has protein skimmer technology that's used because the water that's in that aquarium is the only water that's in that aquarium. And so you have to make sure to continuously clean it to make sure that it, it continues to work and provide clean water for the animals that are using the aquarium. Those systems are designed to work in saltwater. They're not designed to work, you don't, you don't use protein skimmer technology in freshwater aquarium, you use it only in saltwater aquarium.
But how do you explain that, help me, educate me, why in certain areas of Himeri, it's definitely clearer, you could see much better towards the bottom than you used to be able to see?
Yeah, that's, that's something I've heard a number of times, but when you look at the data, it doesn't, it doesn't bear out that there's a, a water clarity issue in the Himeri. And so, for example, we, we looked at the data that Miami Waterkeeper has generated in the Himeri Canal, and at no time was the turbidity standard over the course of the last six months, was the turbidity standard violated in that basin. So there, there's a perception that there's a water clarity problem in the Himeri, but there really isn't. One of the interesting components of waterway quality within the city of Fort Lauderdale is the freshwater flows that are coming from the west are, they, they have an ice tea color, and that is a natural outcome of going through the peat soils in the Everglades. And so the fact that there is color in the water, people often connect that to the water is dirty. The water is not dirty, it's just colored. And that is not, again, that's a natural feature in, in the water bodies throughout southeast Florida.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a few people that want to speak.
Go ahead, yeah.
So let's have them, and, and then if there are any further questions. I'm sorry?
Come, come on up.
Can I just add one more quick thing while we're talking about stormwater improvements? And I, I think Dr. Gaspman is, is on top of a lot of this, but just want to bring up that studies have really shown that the earlier and the further up the pipe, you can address the pollution, the cheaper and the more effective the interventions are going to be. So a lot of people think about what's coming out of the end of the pipe and how to address that, but if you can really address what's getting into the system, that's really where you're going to get the bang for your buck. And people have shown that increased street sweeping can even have a really big impact. And, and while we're talking about illicit dumping and illicit discharges, grease going down the drains can really mess up the storm sewer system and cause spills and illicit hookups. So really, you know, inspecting all the pipes and making sure you're not having discharges, nothing should be coming out of that stormwater pipe when it hasn't rained, for example. And so we, you know, we've gotten calls that people are seeing things coming out of pipes, not in the city of Fort Lauderdale, but in other areas. And, you know, you know that that can't be stormwater, so what is it? And then you need to investigate that, or, you know, illegal hookups sometimes, things like that are really where you're going to get stormwater quality improvement. And also thinking of, and I don't know if this is possible in the city, in a lot of places it's not, but having areas where the stormwater can flow through natural systems, move through plants, through, through open ground before it gets into the system, that will also help clean it and slow down the water rather than thinking about having it move really quickly through the system and discharging without getting cleaned or filtered at all. So that's kind of the green infrastructure piece that we really recommend, that's really helpful for cleaning stormwater.
All right, great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Real quick, Mayor, I was just going to ask, do we have any agreements with other cities or the county? I mean, you keep, you mentioned catching the pollution before it hits the end. I'm thinking, you know, even coming from Lake Okeechobee all the way down and through the other cities, and do the others, who regulates it? Is it the state, is it the county that, you know, makes, I'm thankful for what we're doing as a city, but do other cities have to do the same things?
All cities and, and, Dr. Gaspman, if you want to jump in, but all, all cities and counties have MS4 permits that are, yeah, that are, you know, a, a function of the Clean Water Act. So it's something that, you know, the state is regulating by delegated authority from the state. So there are permit standards that all cities and counties are following that, that maintain and monitor these systems. And then individual properties, if you have a gas station or a scrap metal yard or any kind of, you know, cement plant, anything that could possibly be polluting if the water runs off your property and into a drain, they have a separate permit system called the National Pollution Elimination Discharge System. And what, we're actually looking at this right now as well, focusing in Miami at the, currently, but really looking at compliance, because there, there's a lot of properties to regulate, and, you know, it's, it's really a state system that they're, you know, looking at who's, who's doing the proper monitoring, are they controlling runoff from their properties? Are the storm, the storm sewers being properly cleaned, maintained, tested, all, all those kinds of things? Are illicit discharges being tracked down? Do you have a stormwater master plan, all of those kinds of things? So that, that should all be being regulated. The Lake Okeechobee piece, certainly Lake Okeechobee's causing a lot of pollution problems, you know, for example, the Indian River Lagoon. Thankfully, by the time it gets down here, we don't have as much of that fertilizer nutrient pollution, so a lot of what we're seeing in the waterways is urban runoff or, or from the landscape that's getting into the water rather than what's coming from the lake.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have several people signed up to speak. John Millage, are you here just to answer questions or do you want to speak?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor John Millage, for Clean Waterways. With me is Dr. Gregory, he's going to make a technical presentation, and also Miles Forman and Johnny Loser here also. But before, I think, Dr. Gregory gets up, I just want to remind the commission kind of how we got here today, just the timeline. You know, as you recall, in the summer of 2020, we came forward, you know, with the commission with a concept of a protein skimmer technology. And really, as opposed to, you know, what's been discussed earlier in this presentation with the many things that Dr. Gaspman's talking about that may be beneficial, those are point-of-source kind of solutions to stop things before they get in. What we put together is really the only solution that we, that, that we're aware of today, the technology that once, once it gets in, how do you get it back out? And so this is technology that Dr. Gregory and the folks on the team are very familiar with. We modeled it, we scaled it up, and we're so confident in that, in the outcome of it, that we built the barge and skimmers on our own dollars, several hundred thousand dollars. We did that on our own dime, and we came to the city and said we'd want to do this protein skimmer demonstration project. We had to demonstrate for 10 days, again, at our own cost and expense, the operating, to show that in fact was pulling pollution and coliforms out, which it did prove, and also that the turbidity and the readings were, were trending in, in a positive manner, which it did. So the, the main question is, and Dr. Gregory will get into it, but just to summarize, did the pilot work? And the answer is clearly yes. So we pulled out 8,000 gallons of concentrated sludge from the Himeri Canal. That would multiply to thousands and thousands of gallons of equivalent sewer water that, you know, could have been dumped or equivalent waters of other things that we talked about, you know, from the, the grades that, that have been mentioned earlier. The Water Keepers numbers, my understanding, and, and Dr. Gregory will get into this, the, we had a number of green readings, positive readings, I think four or five during the two months or two and a half months we were there. In the six months before, there might have been one or two. The turbidity and coliform readings showed significant improvement, again, Dr. Gregory will get into that. But as you know, we went into this in the, in the heavy rainy season, and also we discovered, Mayor, as you mentioned, there was outfalls that were contributing, not just during rainy season, but somehow when people were dumping, so that would affect the issue. But the bottom line is, this 8,000 gallons is pollution that we took out of the canal, much like, you know, just taking out normal trash out of the canal that you, you mentioned earlier. And that pollution didn't, some of that did not filter out in the tides to harm the seagrasses to get out and affect the reef. So, you know, there's this concentration on, that we're guaranteeing the water quality in the Himeri Canal, but we, the, the main success is really the thousands and thousands of, of pollution that we took out. So, you know, what was also mentioned is the, the clarity of the water, the eyeball test, and Dr. Gregory will show you the pictures. When we first started, that water was, was thick, it was gray, it had oil sheens on it. You could not see the bottom, you couldn't see the latour shelf. Now, if you walk that canal three months afterwards, it's still in a very good condition. You see the waiting birds that are feeding there, went the other night, took pictures, and night herons were feeding in there. They weren't doing that before because the, the water was thick and it was pretty nasty. So this project has been a, a first, a great first step, and we'd like to continue to work with you. We had asked to work with you on identifying other matching funds. We think there's huge opportunities at the state level for this, and so we're not asking you to shoulder the entire cost of this. We think also there's other efficiencies that we're learning in this program, so we So we can, we can drive our costs down, maximize effectiveness, and also work on other ideas we have. And Dr. Gregory will get into those. I'll also mention that the Fort Lauderdale Marine Advisory Board and the County Marine Advisory Board, both after we presented, both endorsed this program as very promising. And they recommend that, you know, this is a program that should be continued and, 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 and actually improved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. So let's hear from Dr. Gregory. How are you, sir?
Thanks, guys. Do I have time for a quick presentation? Five minutes of a PowerPoint and then quick comment?
Yeah, sure.
Perfect, thank you. All right, awesome. So I'm Dr. Charlie Gregory, I'm a marine veterinarian. I don't do regular veterinary medicine. I focus on the ocean environment and the health of animals in the ocean is highly, highly dependent on water chemistry, the quality, the flow, the oxygenation, all this stuff we've been talking about today, both in the water treatment plant stuff. I'm very familiar with how to keep water clean. So my focus, focus is coral. I'm a coral expert, and Dr. Silverstein also actually is a coral expert. So we're aligned in that context. I have a nonprofit up in Palm Beach County, the Reef Institute. We educate the children because it's super important to get the next generation on board. But coral itself is extremely, extremely important. It holds the coastline together, it builds the beaches when it's healthy, it protects us from hurricanes. It's ecologically and economically formidable in South Florida. And it's in real trouble in this part of the world. Right now, we're down to about 2% coral coverage of its traditional scope. And something like a quarter of all of the marine species in the ocean rely on coral. The fishermen in this part of the world, huge part of their lives. And the tourism industry, of course, is very important here. So when we talk about what's killing the coral, it's directly correlated to this excess nutrient, the nitrogen and the phosphorus running into the water bodies. And it's part of these big molecules that come off the land, either directly as fertilizer or as decaying matter, even sewage, right? And so, when we have that tied up in the intercoastal waterway, it's in the intercoastal waterway unnaturally, and it causes a problem there. But if we stir it up and then send it out into the grass beds and onto the coral reef, again, it's a local problem. Coral worldwide is down to 40% what it should be. In Florida, it's at 2% for a reason, because there's so many people here, and we haven't managed well, these excess nutrients that are going out directly onto our resources. And so, if we're just stirring it up with bubblers or other distribution methods, we aren't addressing the nutrient that's tied up, dissolved into the water. You guys have an array of amazing mitigation strategies already in place, pioneering, world-class. There's, you guys have snout interceptors, right? They're amazing. You can tie up like three barrels of oil and a whole bunch of sediment, and you're, you're way ahead of the game on that. The stuff that gets through, though, is dissolved in the water. And if we can either uptake it in these riparian zones, which these guys were talking about, you get your whole line of vegetation that absorbs that, or you can intercept it at these points where it's entering the waterways, using technology like what we've developed, we're ahead of the game, we're winning. We're creating a, a chance for the seagrass to grow back, the manatees to come back to life, all the fish associated with the coral reef to create economic opportunity. And so, before we even started testing, we identified a whole bunch of hot zones. 70 is the magic number for the coliform bacteria, the Anirococcus. It can survive well in saltwater, and so that's the one that you're looking at in a lot of these places. So there's clearly an issue here. And again, we don't know if it's coming directly from human or other mammalian sources, but when it was a sewage leak, it's obvious. And if there's ongoing sewage issues, then needs to be managed and addressed. The other interesting things that popped up, DP has some information available. And you can see, there's a lot of stuff in there that isn't supposed to be in there. Herbicides, pesticides, acetaminophen's, you know, an NSAID. And proteins can actually pull all these things out as well. Fluoride ion is from tap water, we can't pull that out, it's an ion. But all these other complex molecules, absolutely. And so, John Los is here. We've assembled a whole team of upstanding water management people from this area to really try to develop this technology. And the hope is to not only deploy these at sites where we have, you know, high coliforms and high nutrients, as these ladies are helping identify, which I think is a great idea, create a heat map of the environment, find the point sources, address them on land, and as they enter the water. But protein skimming technology, deployed appropriately, can really pull a lot of the junk out of the water. Each pass, it pulls out half of the nitrogen and phosphorus for whatever water volume it's dealing with. And so, really, what we're looking at is, we've had some success on Himer she. You guys, I think, all saw the barge. And the way we set it up is initially to demonstrate efficacy, we set up these sediment barricades, and we clearly saw turbidity go down, so the water got more clear. Coliforms go down, nitrogen and phosphorus go down within the work area. Dr. Gasman's absolutely right, the technology works amazingly, but it's a question of scaling, and it's a question of the efficiencies, optimizing the tech, the technology for what we're trying to deal with here. So the first initial thing, the little chart here shows that we were very successful at cleaning the water up right until the first time it rained. And then a bunch of water came through the outfall that's off to the right of the skimmer barge in this. And we're still able to stay ahead of the general ambient coliform counts. The protein skimate speaks for itself, it's a sludge, it's brown, it smells, it's like a porta potty because it's absorbing ammonia, the first byproduct of nitrogen in the environment, as well as a bunch of other compounds that are tying up phosphorus and nitrogen, which otherwise would be.
I hope you washed your hands after this.
We had an arrangement with Johnson, which disposed of the essential sewage appropriately. We saw a lot of odd, odd incidents in the canal. Because we were there, eyes on the canal, I've got some great data. If you guys want day-night swings for oxygenation, we, we got that. And we can talk about technology soon. But we were there, eyes on the canal, and we saw a few incidents where there was, a lot like what Dr. Gasman says, probably people washing soap down the, down the drain, so that appropriate actions were taken. There's some dead ducks and dead iguanas, all that doesn't contribute to a healthy environment. So essentially, what we did was we concentrated and removed nitrogen, phosphorus, and coliform bacteria. And the results were immediately cleaner water, more clear water, and highly oxygenated water. And just using their results from when we were operating, it seemed as though we had a pretty good ratio with the coliform counts and the alarms indicated by the ladies here with the Waterkeepers. Looks like over the time that we were there, there was about a four times higher rate of green lights and a higher, a lower on average total count of coliform bacteria. The turbidity seemed to be going very well. Every spike we saw when it got cloudy was during the summer, there's a lot of rain. And we're right here at the Himer she canal where, as Commissioner McKenzie was mentioning on his scouting reports, there's a lot of junk potentially going into the sewers and outflowing into the canal from that area. So with each pulse of rain, we'd see turbidity go up and coliform bacteria go up. Waterkeepers did 120 tests, maybe you did multiple tests, but over the two months we were there, we did over 300 coliform tests. So we were really heat mapping, looking for the sources. And we absolutely collaborate, identified that it was with the rain events that the junk was getting into the water. So just the overall turbidity was going down. Here, we took high and low tide, and the average ends up being lower than here. So seven to four here, and we went five to two here. So overall, it was appearing as though turbidity was looking better. And of course, the benefits of clear water are apparent. You've got the ecological benefits and then all the economical benefits.
If you see a barracuda coming at you.
We saw barracudas coming right at us. Manatee's in crisis right now, and it's clearly identified that the issue is turbidity, it's dying seagrass, and that needs to be turned around before we can really help the manatees long-term. Lots of other stuff as additional outcomes, but the big picture is, these can be deployed as metaphoric fire trucks to put out if there is a sewage spill, an oil spill, something urgent, we could close off that area and just clean the heck out of it before it gets spread out into the water body. Or as kind of general roving garbage trucks, just like your management strategy of pulling out those tons of lawn chairs from the canals. We can move and actually remove nitrogen and phosphorus from the water before it settles down or creates mayhem on the seagrass and coral reefs. And this is just the beginning. I mean, we've gotten the opportunity, working with you guys, to pilot this stuff, but we've already got prototypes and demonstrations in the pipeline to scale this and importantly, economize this so that it can be widely distributed and extremely effective. It does work in freshwater, there's just, most of these are modified to do saltwater. A neat example, I worked at the, at Georgia Aquarium for a few months on my clinical rotations, and that giant ocean tank is 6 million gallons, so it's bigger than the Himer she canal. Himer she, we're estimating 3 million gallons. Their protein skimmers clean up the, each whale shark eats something like 50, 50 pounds of food a day. There's 2,000 pounds of food that go in per day, and their water is crystal clear. And so, protein skimmers are their primary form of filtration in that closed system. But, you know, a lot of the junk is staying in the back of the Himer she, it's not going anywhere. That's why we're having issues and continual problems. Pollution goes in, some flushes out, a lot stays in there. That's why the bubblers would help at least clear it out of there, which might not be ideal in the first place. But the protein skimmers, they can clean up the whale shark poop in that size thing to keep it pristine for everybody coming all over the world in the biggest aquarium on the planet. The technology's proven, it's pretty awesome. In the big picture, currently, there's nothing else that can pull junk out of the water like these, nitrogen, phosphorus, coliform bacteria, and all sorts of other human chemicals that we can intercept with this technology. So we're just on early phases. Again, we're very enthusiastic and development phases from some of these other next-generation texts. Thanks, guys.
Great, thank you so much.
Dr. Gregory, I've got a couple of questions.
Miles, you want to add to, Miles, you want to add anything?
No, I was just here in case anyone had questions, but thank you all for listening.
Thanks. Dr. Gregory, Miles, just a couple of questions. Thanks. Was out there with you all to see this and saw, you know, inaction, which seemed great to me. What happened after you all left the Himer she turbidity?
So it stayed relatively clear, again, ideally, we would be, I mean, these are scientists. Ideally, we were there for a year. We've been off the record monitoring turbidity, and it stayed similar to when we left it there, 2, 3, 4 MPN. It's a question of, if you go there right after a rainstorm, of course, it's going to be more cloudy. So if you've got the ability to be there 24/7, that's awesome. We were able to take four readings a day while we were there, low, medium, high, medium-low tides, depending on the cycle. These ladies get a point each week, which over time gives you a big-picture idea. The seasonality of the turbidity, the Himer she canal is absolutely a factor. Pollution events absolutely a factor. What we're really hoping, though, is that we gave the environment the leg up. We pulled enough pollution out there that the marine biology started to take effect. The bottom was more, it was cleared of like blue-green algae. And now, a more healthy benthic fauna is in place, which appropriately recycles and utilizes that nutrient, keeps it from getting suspended in bacteria and algae that cloud the water.
Okay, so the turbidity improvement sustained?
It, it seems so from what we're looking at.
Okay, great. Next question is, what about this concept of due to the tidal flows and so forth in a body of water that there's, you know, it's hard to, you know, clean, as it were, all the water due to the tidal.
Absolutely, absolutely. And again, I use the analogy of, we've got 2% coral cover here in Florida, but around the world that isn't 2% coral cover, the whole world is polluting, right? Some of these rivers in Southeast Asia are tragic, tragic with plastic and whatnot. But here, there's just a lot of people, and we weren't managing it well over time. If we can intercept it in all of the ways we've talked about today, we can make that type of a difference. We can create a, a local bubble that produces a healthier environment. We can give a leg up to the environment. There's other mitigation strategies. Again, we've planted a lot of plants, if we really nurture seagrass, those are second and third steps. But reducing the nitrogen and phosphorus is the first step to doing that. And we can affect that directly right here. In this, in the science we were doing, as we got closer to the river mouth, there were days where we actually saw nutrient, coliform bacteria, nitrogen coming in from the new river into the Himer she canal during a high tide. So it's finding the points of pollution, mitigating them, pulling as much out of the water as possible, giving a leg up to the environment, and we can make a big difference locally. It's not going to be coming in from the open ocean.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we have two more people who signed up to speak, Boyd Corbin and Jeff Maggio. Is Jeff here?
How you doing? I'm Jeff Maggio, I'm a local fishing guide. I've been, lived on the waterway system here since 1977. And the reason I showed up today is I wanted to show my support for the Clean Water Project, the protein skimmer. We pioneered down here in South Florida on ways to totally dismantle and pollute the environment. And I really think it's important that we're also the ones that pioneer the way to clean it up. Now, my job is a fishing guide, and these are long hours on the water every single day, is to look and analyze exactly what's living in our waterway system. And let me assure you that it's never been as bad as it is today. The one breath of fresh air that I was able to observe last year was the protein skimmer. So whether or not that's the answer to cleaning up everything or not, I firmly believe that giving companies the opportunity to pioneer a new Florida and a new way to clean up is the way to go. So some of the other things that I heard today, I see on a daily basis. If anybody wants to try to convince me that that metal boat that you guys have hired to go around the canal system takes a thousand pounds of trash out of the water every single day, they're not seeing what I'm seeing. Most of the time when I see that boat, it's sitting still. Nobody, nobody using it. And then when I do see the boat out there cleaning up, far from thousands and thousands of pounds of debris that they're getting out of the water system. So I'm not sure how you guys are calculating that from that particular company, but I can tell you from a bird's eye view that it's failing and it's failing miserably. As far as the Himer she canal goes, that just happens to be in my neighborhood and on my walk every single day, and I often get baited in the Himer she canal. And I watch the protein skimmer clean the canal. And I've also watched the pipes in that canal re-pollute the canal. And whether it's raining or not is not necessarily the determining factor. It'll be dry for weeks on out. And if you look at the pipes that drain into the Himer she canal, which is a microcosm of the rest of the intercoastal system, there's crap coming out of there literally on a daily basis. Maybe not every single day, all the time, but I take pictures of it on my walk. I take pictures of it on my daily work routine. And I firmly believe that it's going to be companies in the private sector that we need to give a chance to clean up the waterways. Now, I spent three and a half, four hours today here, just to give you three minutes of what I have to say. So I hope you take it, and I hope you understand where I'm coming from. And I hope you guys are the leaders here in the state of Florida to pioneer the way for clean water. And I firmly believe that the protein skimmer is the right step in the right direction. I also would like to thank you guys for hiring Rachel Silverstein and doing the water tests so we could actually, you know, get some sort of real information, because until then, it was all speculation. I don't know of anybody else that spends the time and energy on the water as I do. And I'm more than happy to help you guys in any ways that I can. And thank you for taking the first step with the clean waterways. And I would hope to see you guys take more steps with other companies in the future as some of the things that we've discussed between planting mangroves, water goat systems, and so on and so forth. The amount of plastic and the amount of pollution that comes into the waterway through the drains is extraordinary. From Boca Raton to Miami, we now refer to as the river of trash. Because every time it rains, we use it as a liquid dump. It's nothing new, but I'm just glad that we were finally taking the first step and maybe being the pioneers to clean this stuff up.
All right, great, thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Boyd Corbin.
You guys need to take control and find the restaurants that are dumping junk into the canals. They do it because you let them. Obviously, you haven't done enough to clean up the 250 million gallon sewage spill since river and canal water keeps failing safe water tests. There's still way too much fecal matter for swimming, paddleboarding, kayaking, and other recreational water sports. Why will it take two and a half years to install enough aerators and Why will it take two and a half years to install enough aerators and protein skimmers? The 2017 Rees report warned about the terrible condition of sewer lines, but nearly two years into this commission's term, nothing was done to physically fix the seven-mile Force Main sewer pipe before it burst. The 2020 Hammershy Canal break that lasted weeks had been temporarily fixed a year before, but a permanent fix, which should have been done, was overlooked, leading to disastrous consequences. When running for mayor in 2017, Dean, you said, what am I going to do, ignore the Rees report? That's exactly what you did. And you're still ignoring advice from Rees Engineering, which has a 30-year history with the city. Dean, the fact that you asked today if minerals caused the color problems in city drinking water proves that you have not thoroughly read the 2017 Rees report, the 2019 Corolla report, or the 2021 Rees Pilot Study Report. I suggest you read them. Insufficient filtering out of natural organic materials causes city tap water to come out of five ash green. Old city water pipes then turn it yellow and brown. That's all.
Great, thank you. Anyone else interested in speaking on this subject? Okay, no one else has signed up, so.
Mayor?
Yes, Greg.
Dr. Gasman wanted to
I can't hear you.
Dr. Gasman wanted to add a little more to the discussion.
Sure, come on up, Nancy. Why don't you wrap things up for us? Go ahead.
I'm just pulling up a few slides to help you understand and provide a little context to the skimmer question. Thank you. Nope. Bear with us. Apologies for the delay. It's further down. Anywhere in there.
While we're waiting, folks on the commission, would you mind if we reconvened this conference meeting so we can do our commission reports at the end of our meeting tonight? Because otherwise, we're not going to have enough time. Is that okay with everybody? Okay.
We just spoke to our folks.
Yeah. I'm sure you have a lengthy one, Commissioner.
I want to give you time.
Okay. Ooh. Well, that makes one of you. Okay.
Thank you for allowing a short rebuttal, Mayor.
Yes.
The city took great care in looking at the data that was available in the Hammershy Canal that had been generated by Miami Waterkeeper. And they were providing this data the entire time that the protein skimmer was working. When you look at the data then and compare what was happening nine weeks before the skimmer was operating, and then nine weeks after the skimmer was operating, what we found is that the bacteria concentrations were not statistically different, that there was too much variability in the data, both going up and down, that prevented the ability to come to the conclusion that protein skimming was effective in reducing the bacteria concentration in that canal. When we looked at turbidity nine weeks before they started their work and then nine weeks after, what we discovered is that there was never a violation of water quality standards in the canal, meaning that the turbidity was always below, based on, again, Miami Waterkeeper data, that the turbidity was always below the standard for these types of waterways. And so any claim that there was an improvement in turbidity isn't looking at the data in a way that shows that there was any statistical difference. The information that they were provided were based on general conclusions and not statistical comparison of their data sets.
But didn't they show physical results of drawing out?
I'll get to that in just a minute. When you look at oxygen data, you asked what the oxygen standard is, it's four milligrams per liter.
Right.
And what we saw, what I would have expected from this type of technology is that we would have seen an increase in oxygen levels in the canal. And right at the barge, that may have been possible, but when you look at Miami Waterkeeper's data and you compare before the barge operated and after the barge, before the barge started its operation and then during its operation, statistically, there was less oxygen in the water during that timeframe. And that's what this graphic shows you. And that the percentage of the time that oxygen samples passed water quality standards prior to their operation versus during their operation was statistically different, with meeting the oxygen standard prior to that operation more often than after. There was also a claim of increased biodiversity in the Hammershy Canal, and part of that claim was that the increased clarity or the lack of turbidity and improvements were making this happen. In scientific method, you spend time, an equal amount of time observing before as you do observing after in order to be able to demonstrate that there's actually been an improvement. Prior to them operating this barge in the Hammershy Canal, they claimed there were only four species of wildlife identified. Well, they spent several hours before the pilot developing that number of species that they saw. During the pilot, they spent 720 hours on that barge, and their conclusion was that the barge itself created the opportunity for those increases in biodiversity, when in fact, they are comparing four hours of observation to 720 hours of observation. So it's very difficult to take on the anecdotal claims of this company when you consider the actual data that's available and you compare it in a statistic and scientifically rigorous manner.
Okay, so, but in terms of empirical results, you know, I mean, eyewitness the sludge in their fingers, I mean, there's some benefit to this operation, would you not say?
There is some benefit to the operation, but in a closed-loop system, that's actually true, but in an open system where you have inputs coming in all the time, as Dr. Silverstein suggested, your potential cost-benefit analysis will tell you to work on the upstream pollutants rather than try to clean up the waterway after the pollutants have already gotten in there.
Okay.
For $350,000, we could spend a lot of money putting in additional pollution retardant baffles, we could hire a full-time code enforcement officer for three years to work on the Hammershy challenges with some of our restaurant. There's many other ways that we can spend those dollars that will result in real and permanent improvements in our water quality rather than a transient cleaning up of water quality through this type of technology.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Miller, did you want to say something?
Yeah, Mayor, can Dr. Gregory address these slides? I'm not sure why she held those back, but we'd like to address them, if Dr. Gregory can come up.
Well, I mean, okay, I mean, let's just take a couple more minutes because we need to end this discussion.
They're all good points. I mean, I don't know if you guys did a marine biology assessment before the fact, but you must have, right? If you want to bring up later some other, or we can forward you, how many species were identified during a previous assessment, very recent after the sewage spills? I don't know what it is, but, you know, we were honestly looking at very cloudy water and didn't see very much life in there. The idea of taking a sample once a week and then throwing up statistical error bars, we mentioned before, like after a rainstorm or literally after a sewage spill, or there's so many things that go on in that water body. If you're only looking once a week, you're not getting the big picture. Over a long time, maybe, but we were there, you know, 10 hours a day, three months in a row, and we saw the turbidity decrease because we were taking tests four times a day. And we saw marine biology coming back because we were there looking, she's right, we were there looking, we were looking hard, we were watching directly around the barge. If you put a bubbler in the end of the canal, do you think you're going to increase the oxygenation? More than three protein skimmers, there are like these tornadoes of bubbles, you're not going to. The sharks that were brought into the canals on the West Coast when they had oxygen problems could feel the oxygen from miles away, and they come to it like it's an oasis. So if you're operating a protein skimmer barge, it's providing an environment of oxygenation. And if you're patrolling with it, it offers kind of a vacuum cleaner effect through wherever it's going. The positioning of a protein skimmer barge at a bottleneck, absolutely, we got to mitigate those things as they're coming in. So if there is a disaster, we can figure out hot spots, point sources, that's where you put your barge and your sediment barricades, and they really work effectively. When you've got a lot of junk concentrated in the water, then they can pull a lot out very efficiently. The economics of this are getting better every day. 350 grand, yeah, that's a lot of money. We're getting our heads around the technology, we're optimizing, we're getting new leave-behinds, non-manned versions, automation. And our goal is to save the ocean. These guys who started this company, it's their kids paddleboarding that they want to bring back. It isn't about, you know, 350 grand, it's more about doing this to change the world, to save the ocean. My whole modus operandi is coral. What these guys were doing when they called on me, I got a lot of people looking for my attention all the time, I'm very famous in the aquarium world. But at the end of the day, what they were doing, I thought was compelling. I was embarrassed that we hadn't thought of it before as like an aquarist community, as a modality to help the ocean, which to me is extremely important.
Okay.
So thank you guys for your time. Again, they're all valid points, but when we're talking about science, we need more data, but they certainly need more data also. And if it's about getting water keepers to amplify their efforts to really hound dog the sources of pollution, then I completely encourage that as well. And I'm absolutely willing to work with Dr. Gasman, water keepers, we're all on the same page. We're all fighting for the same cause here. Thanks, guys.
All right, great, thank you. Anything further? If not, we'll just reconvene after the regular meeting, okay? Very good, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.